I'm so tired of today.
You can be.
Okay, I'll get to public.
I see.
I'm gonna call a meeting to order and ask the court to read the roll.
Mayor Williams?
Here.
Mayor from Kent Marshville?
I'm present.
Councilmember Behringer?
Here.
Councilmember Johns?
Present.
Councilmember Kennedy?
Here.
And Councilmember Singleton?
Here.
Asking you to join, Captain Behringer, please lead us. Be proud.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. I'll call Ms. Behringer for the invocation.
Okay, would you bow your heads please? Father God, we've come before you this evening with humility and gratefulness for what we've been spared, and Lord, we ask that you be merciful to those who are suffering from the hurricane aftermath of the hurricane and things that are happening around the world that are where people are not as fortunate as we are. We ask for your wisdom as we deliberate and make decisions for the well-being of this town, and we ask you to guide us and keep us. In Jesus's name, amen.
Okay, before we get into public, just as a good-looking proof, y'all feel good about yourselves? I'm glad you're here. Petition and comments. Time on the agenda to address the council on a high of not on the agenda. If you want to address the council, go to the podium, state your name and address. You can talk to us. Anybody wanna talk to us? Everybody happy? That's good. Adoption of the agenda.
Move adoption of the agenda as presented by the town clerk.
Second. The motion is second. All in favor, vote by saying aye. All opposed. Your petitions.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I want to take the time to recognize some of our town staff members and some of our local partners. Ms. Behringer mentioning her prayer about some of the suffering and some of the things that have happened here recently with some of the storms, namely Hurricane Florence. We had a lot of destruction and flooding in the eastern part of the state, and as part of that, some of our partners and FEMA and I think some of the local government associations reached out to different other local governments to see if we could provide assistance. And we had two town departments provide assistance to New Bern and also the Garner Fire Rescue provided some assistance. I think they went to New Bern also, if I'm not mistaken, but I'll let them correct that if that's not correct, but they did go down east to help out with some of the cleanup efforts and some of the other duties as far as security and policing and cleanup. So I wanted to recognize them. I know we have from the fire department, we have Don Johnson, he's here if you want to come up, and Chris Malinsky. I'll have them come up to the podium here, and you don't have to make a long speech, but if you could just talk about where you went and maybe some of the things that maybe that you did while you were there.
Just a little. You're used to singing in front of the crowds, so talk.
If you'd rather sing for us.
I'm very uncomfortable with public speaking. So, what we did, what we went. So, we spent about a week down in Columbus County, went down to Columbus County, and we carried the, one of our brush units, one of the UTVs and the special operations trailer, spent the first couple of days in Fairbluff where they had had some pretty serious destruction from Matthew that they were still recovering from. So fortunately, a lot of their area that was flooded had actually not been, they had not come back to their homes yet, so the evacuation process there went pretty quick. From there, we were reassigned over to Lake Waukamaw, and the majority of that was more of a, they had kind of transitioned at that point in that area from a rescue mode to more of a recovery mode, and so we were assisting with getting supplies out to folks that were unable to take care of themselves, getting some water, some food, and some helping out with some tars and things like that with some damage on their homes. And so we spent three, four days in Columbus County. They were very gracious to us, just took good care of us. So, you know, we were honored to go down and do that. They were very appreciative, very appreciative of the town of Garner and for allowing us to go down and do that. It left the fire department a little shorthanded, but they, like we always do, kind of buckled down and handled that so we could go out and help others, because, you know, that's what the town of Garner does. Fire, police, public works, everyone, so it was an honor to go down and do it. Thank you for recognition, but there were a lot of folks there just like us that were there, some of their own free will. And so, no, I mean, I mean, we volunteered together, but we were actually going through an organization. There were a lot of folks down there that were down, that just took personal time off and went down there on their own. They weren't going through their departments, and so that's what I mean by that.
We're glad you clarified that.
Makes you proud to be a North Carolinian, and we're especially proud to be able to represent Garner's, thank you.
Yeah, we appreciate that. Next, I'll call up Chief Zudema, talk about the police and some of the duties they had in New Bern, and definitely recognize your folks that are here.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. So with us tonight is Investigator Trey Robinson. He is one of six members of the police department that went to New Bern. So we were fortunate enough to, on behalf of the North Carolina Association of Chiefs of Police, work with the state EOC to get requests out from New Bern and a number of other communities. We were in Fairbluff, excuse me, Pine, Fairbluff and other communities down that way, Boiling Spring Lakes and some others where they just had, you had the whole range of a place like New Bern that has a large police department but was inundated and needed help, and then you had places like Boiling Spring Lakes that have, you know, five or six police officers but all of a sudden needed 20 because of having to do security and things like that. So our folks went down and worked 12-hour shifts, they went down for three days at a time, and I want to commend the members of the fire department, the members of public works, and Trey and his peers, because nobody, again, ordered them to go. We said, is anybody willing to go? And they immediately stepped up knowing they were going to a potentially dangerous situation, leaving behind, you know, a situation where we didn't get hit nearly as bad as them, but there were other people that had needs in this area, but they volunteered to go down and sleep in maybe not the greatest conditions and working not maybe the greatest conditions, but they didn't hesitate to step up. So I want to commend Trey and his peers and give him just a second to maybe share a little bit about what was going on down there.
So they just had us paired up with New Bern officers assisting with patrol duties, and one of the biggest things about it was not so much just going down there and helping with the security, but it was a big morale boost for some of the New Bern officers because we found out later, some of those guys hadn't had days off in like over a week, probably almost two weeks, you know, working around the clock. Some of them had lost their homes from the storm, and I guess just being able to have somebody in the car with them to talk to was nice for them. So it was nice to be down there and be able to help and assist with what we did. It was wild to see, you know, boats in people's front yards and crashed into the houses, but again, like Captain Johnson said, this is what we do, and we're always willing to step up and help when we can. So I want to thank you guys for the recognition. I hate the other guys couldn't be here tonight, but they certainly appreciate it as well.
Yeah, we thank you for representing Garner. Appreciate it. And then next, I'll call up Forrest Jones, Public Works Director.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Yes, we too had an opportunity to go down and help out in the city of New Bern. We sent four of our teams down for about two weeks. Our fire and friends and fire and police were really kind of down on the front ends on the very early aftermath after Florence, helping provide some security, getting some immediate aid to folks, and then our focus was a little different in that we kind of came down probably four or five days after the event and began to start helping them rebuild and clean up and get back to some sense of normalcy, which they are, they've still got a long ways to go. We had fourteen, we had four of our folks go from Public Works. They went for a period of two weeks, again, worked about six days a week, 12 hours each day. Two, they volunteered, you know, it was not a mandatory piece that we must go. We got a request on a Friday evening to go. I think there was a number of us that met the next morning for breakfast of our leadership team and tried to figure out how we could accommodate this request, again, taking time for folks that didn't go, but making that commitment to go help our folk or friends in need. Those that went with us were our Public Works Specialist Brian Spear. I asked him to stand and raise, raise hand a little bit there. One of our equipment operators, Lance Pentrelli, in the Carolina hat. He wore that just for me, and I wore my blue tie just for him. We also had Alonzo Deans, one of our other equipment operators go, and then our street supervisor, Dale Adams, went as well. So that was the team from Public Works that went down and spent right around two weeks down in New Bern. I'll ask Dale to come up just a little bit and give you a glimpse into some of the things we did while we were there, let you get a little bit of that sense and experience about what they did. As others have said, thank you for your support in allowing us to go and do that. Clearly, that took away from some of our services, and we'll thank our citizens also for allowing us to go as well, recognizing it may have delayed a little bit of some of your regular services, but we certainly appreciate your understanding and patience with us while we try to help others in need. Dale?
First, I'd like to thank y'all for allowing us to go. You know, we, it was a, it was a humbling experience. We hauled around 140 loads, three trucks, we carried a loader down. These guys loaded up and took off with their families. You know, I called them on Saturday, they were ready to go on Monday, Tuesday. We went down, like I say, 140 loads, six days a week. They came home Saturday night, left again Sunday night to go back, came home, just changed clothes. But for us, it was humbling. What we were hauling away, we, we think about cleanup. I think we all went with the idea of our town cleanup that we do, our spring cleanup, our fall cleanup, but it was so much more. We were hauling people's lives. It's just, it took a day to figure it out, but they just, we were learning the clothes, furniture, just, it was unimaginable. It was a humbling experience for us, and again, we thank y'all for allowing us.
Closing, I'd like to, again, thank you guys for taking time to go out of your schedules. Again, no one was required to go, they all volunteered, and I think when we called them on Saturday, most of them were probably ready to go Sunday or Monday, but again, that just shows their commitment to public service, and we do thank you for that, and thanks for our fellow departments also going down and supporting others. Thank you very much.
Thank you for it.
We thank all of you. You know, just really quick in closing, I just wanted to say, thank you. We thank you for representing the town of Garner, because anywhere you go, your equipment has that town seal, your clothes has that town seal, or the name Garner on it, and we appreciate y'all representing us very well. A lot of times, we take for granted that during storms and disasters, there's certain segment of our staff that's gonna be working, you know, before the storm gets here, during the storm, and then we certainly see that there's still a lot of work to be done after the storm, even if it's not here, it's other places where there is need. So we really appreciate it. So if y'all could just stand, the ones that went, and we want to give you another round of applause. And you're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, but I'm sure you'd like to, since you put some time away, you'd probably like to get home to your family, so I'm gonna give you this opportunity to leave before we continue on with the rest of the meeting, if you'd like.
Thank you. Thank you, Dan. Okay, next on the agenda is the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, move approval of the consent agenda.
Second. Motion made, second, all in favor, vote by saying aye. All opposed. We have four, that was only consentful item, now we got under H public hearing. We have one, Captain Patel, senior planner, rezoning on Maxwell Drive. Welcome. Yeah, this is the public hearing, I'm gonna open it.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members.
Good evening.
I'm here to present the general use rezoning for 800 Maxwell Drive and 1,000 Maxwell Drive. The applicant is Roy Tripp. The owners of the two parcels in question are Twinship Development Company and THL Inc. As I mentioned, the address for the two parcels is 800 Maxwell Drive and 1,000 Maxwell Drive. The tract being rezoned is 2.77 acres, and it's split between two parcels. We are here today for October 16th public hearing, and this project would go to Planning Commission at their next meeting in November, on November 13th, and come back to you guys in December. So the purpose of the rezoning is to downzone the parcel from the current zoning of R9 C153 to R40 in order to build a detached accessory storage unit that exceeds 50% of the size of the home, the principal structure, which is the existing use of the property and that will remain. The applicant owns the two contiguous properties on Maxwell Drive. 1,000 Maxwell Drive is the one that contains the residence, and 800 Maxwell Drive is the vacant undeveloped parcel that is zoned R9 C153. So as I mentioned a lot, with the residence has the split zoning and a portion of the properties already zoned R40, but the other half was zoned R9 C153 when there was a previous application for some redevelopment in the area. The remaining area not zoned R40 will remain as R9 C153 on the 800 Maxwell Drive parcel. Here is a Google aerial of the parcel in question. As I mentioned, it is split in two, and this left, the right parcel is the 800 Maxwell Drive, and the right left parcel is 1,000 Maxwell Drive. The adjacent zoning and land use in the area, so the two parcels on the east are R9 and south are R9 C153, that was the approved subdivision of Jameson. The parcels to the north are MF2, which is the Pine Winds Apartments. The parcels to the east are R9 Single Family, and the parcels to the west are R9 and R40. So as I mentioned, there was some rezoning in this area, and that's basically, the general rezoning was Z1604 on 1016 Maxwell Drive going from R40 to R9, as well as the rezoning of this particular parcel, which was in 2008 CUD, C0802 Homestead Developer, going from R40 to R9 C153. The existing zoning classification is R9 C153, which allows single-family lots of 9,000 square feet, about .2 acres. Properties zoned R9 can be developed at a density of about 4.84 units per acre. The requested zoning classification would be to downgrade it to R40, which would allow 40,000 square feet, about .92 acres, and the density would be 1.089 units per acre. As I mentioned earlier, the purpose is to build a detached accessory storage unit that exceeds 50% of the size of the home that's on the property. So the following R40 uses would be allowable on the rezoning portion of the 2.77 acre tract. It includes a lot of single-family uses, as well as some residential and other commercial, other uses. There is sewer and water at the site, eight-inch water main to the south, and eight-inch sewer to the south as well, and an eight-inch sewer main to the north. The site has approximately 115 feet of frontage on Maxwell Drive, and is, Maxwell Drive is a 22-foot wide NC DOT maintained facility. This road lacks curb and gutter and sidewalks. The site is already developed with a single-family home, so no home, so no road improvements are required as part of the rezoning. However, if the site were redeveloped in the future, then road improvements would be applicable. We also do not anticipate any additional traffic impacts as a result of the rezoning. There are no locate, there are no FEMA flood identified planes delineated on the parcels in question. In regards to the 2018 Garner Forward Comprehensive Plan, the site is identified as a medium-density residential category on the future land use map, which allows a density of two and a half to five dwelling units per acre. Additionally, the future land use map in the Garner Forward Comprehensive Plan also identified future areas of redevelopment. As such, this property falls within a mixed-use redevelopment designation. So if the request for Z1804 seeks to downzone from R9 to R40, the requested R40 zoning district's density is less than the comprehensive plan's medium-density residential, therefore it would not be consistent with the comp plan. Approval of this request will require a concurrent amendment to the comp plan and redesignate the rezoning site from medium-density residential to a low-density residential designation, which would be at less than 2.5 units per acre. The question therefore before the community is whether or not this is appropriate. There are several considerations that should be taken into account when evaluating this request. One, there are no plans to develop this site into a low-density, large-lot residential subdivision. The request is solely related to a desire of building an accessory building unit that is larger than what is allowed in R9. And then another is that there are seven single-family residential residences along this area of Maxwell Drive that are all on large lots and currently operate within the low-density residential intensity. Staff will provide a recommendation at the November 13th Planning Commission meeting, and council action is to conduct the public hearing and recommend this project to Planning Commission.
Council, any questions, comments? Go ahead.
One question. You mentioned no transportation improvements on this side because of the existing house, but we recently, my members served me right, recently approved a subdivision directly south of this, correct? Whether we're making transportation improvements on that side of the road, correct?
Yes, on the frontage along that side.
Frontage alongside, just east of Fred A. Smith School. Okay. Thanks.
Yeah, the council member. Anyone in the audience? Okay, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Refer this to the Planning Commission. You've been preserving Garner's history. Because I don't know who to call, I'm gonna call Amy Griggs.
I'll open it up. Real quick, Mr. Mayor, over the last few months, town staff, Garner Downtown Association, and a group that formed or reformed the Garner Historical Society have been discussing with the town council the possibility of moving the Historic Depot, and maybe some ideas about what could be done with it. And in those discussion, council asked the group to, you know, go back and think about comprehensively what the plans are for preserving Garner's history, you know, how would we be preserved, what would be preserved, what would be the town's role, what would be the role of the Historical Society, and think about some of the immediate, you know, and long-term goals for preserving Garner's history. So that group is here today. Not sure who's gonna speak on your behalf, but I'll introduce Amy Griggs, and she'll go through some of those points, and then we'll have a dialogue about the information they're gonna provide and where we go from here.
Well, come here.
Oh, wow. I think that's not it.
It should be at the bottom.
There it is. I do thank you, Rodney.
All right.
We're gonna start the slideshow, and then I'll introduce myself. Okay? All right. Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening.
Councilmembers Behringer, Mr. Johns, Mr. Singleton, Mr. Kennedy, and town staff, thank you so much for this opportunity to come before you tonight and share our story and our vision. We are Garner Area Historical Society. I'm Amy Griggs, 209 Shady Hollow Lane in Garner, and I'm one of four executive committee members and nine additional board members that you will learn about in just a few minutes. I would take this time very quickly to represent, to recognize some special guests here tonight. We have Representative Rosa Gill, who represents the District 33, which is part of Garner, and with her is Representative Bobby Richardson from District 7. I believe that's Nash and Franklin Counties. They ran from a meeting to this meeting, so we thank y'all for coming. And the rest of you, thank you for coming, and we appreciate your support here tonight for Garner Area Historical Society. Among us here tonight, we could probably all tell a thousand stories from bygone days, the kind of stories we'd hate to lose. We've heard so many lately. We love the stories from Greens Garner Grill, now Angie's, and the Tooten Tale, and like stories that have been told since the 1940s about the Chitlin Club. That was one of the things that came up. If you don't know what Chitlins are, I will tell you later. But you love the pictures. Just very briefly, former Governor Carr Scott gathered his friends and political allies in the 1940s. These were good Democrats, I understand, and came to Greens Garner Grill where the dinner featured, of course, Chitlins. And it became an annual event, and at some point was given the name, the Wake County Chitlin Club. I've heard so many stories, I just wish I could tell you five more. We hear that they allow some Republicans in there now, and also that I think their tradition stands that they, they don't have any women members of the club just now, so. The Chitlin Club has, at least in some circles, put Garner on the map, but many, many more people know about Garner because of those two down home restaurants, and of course, now Angie's. So we've started this short slide presentation to accompany our remarks tonight, and we'll provide copies of both the remarks in the slideshow for you in an old-fashioned hard copy. We'll move on by stating three reasons we ask to come before you tonight. First, we proudly introduce you to Garner Area Historical Society. Second, we will explain our preference in relocating the Historic Depot. And third, we will ask the council to partner with us so that we can create a history museum in the Historic Depot to be curated, operated, and funded by Garner Area Historical Society. A sense of urgency motivates many of us here tonight, and I know some of you out there as well. It was this sense of urgency that would not let up for four Garner women, Kay Whaley, Karen Pageant, Judy Bass, and me, who ultimately united and organized this Historical Society for the sake of preserving Garner's history, so that in this rapidly, crazy rapidly changing town, the roots of our culture would not be lost or forever forgotten. Of course, the future of our beloved depot, a symbol of the town and a reminder of who we once were, that was what jolted us to do this. Our efforts are not new. We stand on the shoulders of people who shared a passion for historic preservation and whose Herculean efforts helped us, helped to make downtown what it is today. The historic district that we treasure now is their legacy. Rex Todd, sorry, Jenna Stevenson, my good friend, Pam Cash, another good friend of mine, and Anna Hudson, who worked tirelessly on the Senior Center, and you, Mayor Williams, and you, the sitting council now, who have remained steadfast through your action in support of historic downtown, and you've made it an integral part of Garner and life here and our identity, and for that, we thank you. So tonight, we are very proud to present to you So tonight, we are very proud to present to you Garner Area Historical Society. We are tax-exempt in North Carolina as of September and are awaiting federal exemption status. Garner Area Historical Society has 13 members on the Board of Directors, and I just called these ladies names, Kay, Karen, Judy, and me, and I'm going to name the others, and I, it's a busy night. We have, I believe, one board member here, and Phillips Holland, where are you? Would you please stand? And do we have another board member who has snuck in while I wasn't looking? Okay, and I'll just read the others. Ellis Williams, Lauren Jones, Joe Sample, Tom Maynard, there's Ann, Kay Cathy Dowd, Rosemary Carmichael, Wayne Brooks, and Elaine Anis. And it gives me great pleasure to introduce to you three of student, former students of mine who have become our first student interns. And if y'all would please stand, they are Josh Britton, there's Alexis Oliver, stay standing for me here for just a second, and Sandra Gonzalez-Peral, and y'all make us so proud. Thank you so much for coming. Can't wait to work with you. Roughly 50 more folks have attended one or two of our organizing meetings, and still others have expressed their fervent support. Some new folks in Garner and some old Garner families, that really pleases us and, and motivates us. Our board just adopted bylaws, and we can make a copy of those bylaws available to you. Very quickly, our mission statement reads, Garner Area Historical Society is dedicated to preserving the history of Garner and nearby crossroads, educating youth and promoting Garner's story. And just a couple of our objectives that we felt like were important for you to hear. The next, yeah, there you go. Create a home for artifacts and collections that reflect and serve the diversity of people from our area, past and present, and another one, to help young people make connections between history and today's world, and to facilitate enjoyable learning experiences. A membership structure is spelled out in our bylaws with very modest dues. Moving forward, volunteers will serve on committees to handle such businesses, finance and fundraising, marketing, public relations, social media, we need some help with that. And when the time comes, additional work groups will tackle tasks like exhibits, archives, history, genealogy, special events, of course, and incorporating technology. What we've learned for sure in six short months of pulling all this together is that these ideas resonate with so many people in this town. We are so encouraged by, by the reaction that we've been getting. This is the right thing to do, and it's the right time to do it. The town is at a crossroads right now, deciding exactly what's to become of our Historic Depot, but everybody agrees it's time to do something. The condition of the building and the need to relocate it are critical. For three decades, the vision has been for the depot to become a museum, but a series of obstacles has brought us to today. A lightning fast, I'll go as fast as I can, if I, if I'm going too fast, I'll slow down. A review of the depot's history will add context to those who don't know it, and it shows the ongoing interest in the depot museum concept and the need to take action. So in 1902, the depot was built, serving, the train served farmers, industry, and passengers. Forward to '67, when railroad authorities deemed the depot no longer necessary, and it was donated to the town and moved to Ranvee Road. Then jumped to 1987, when volunteers raised money to renovate the depot for, for use as a museum, reconstructing a section destroyed by Hurricane Hazel, I think that was 1954, when that happened. This dedicated group works with the town and Southern Railway to have the depot placed back at its original location on the tracks where it sits today. 2003, with grant money that the town receives, it helps install parking, a handicap ramp, landscaping, and signage with the goal of a museum opening. But due to its location in the railroad right-of-way, lack of restrooms, and dangerous traffic, it is thought to be an unsuitable site for a museum, as we understand it, so the museum effort stalled. Now, 2011, the council discusses relocating the depot to a safer location near Garner Rec Park, where restroom facilities and parking are available. Up to 2016, due to, due to the deterioration of the depot, Public Works receives estimates for repairs and moving costs. And stay with me, two more recent notes, and that will be the history review. In August of 2017, town-appointed relocation task force had been working since January, and they recommended the council to move the depot to the lot at Pearl and Main Street, and the council directs staff to design a preliminary site plan based on the recommendation of the task force. March of 2018, that was this March, the town staff presents the count, to the council, its preliminary plan for relocating the depot at Pearl Street. And citing several objections, the council directs staff to explore two alternate sites and states a desire to revisit the topic in 90 days. And here we are today. That's the briefest we can make it, but what it shows is that it is the right time to act, and, and we want to help. Here's what we'll do, that's why we're here, we want to help. What we can offer, we believe a public-private partnership between the town of Garner and this historical society will work. If the town council were to agree to the Pearl Street site as the depot's new home and partner with us, Garner Area Historical Society would curate and operate a great Garner museum. We envision, where do you see this? We envision the depot nestled at the back of the site alongside the old fire station building with a walkway connecting the two, giving the museum access to restrooms there, and maybe someday using that building for a fire, police, and rescue exhibit. And if I can show, with the pointer, the, the pointer was working earlier.
You may have to use the mouse.
I'm sorry?
You may have to use the mouse, I'm not sure that ray will show up on screen.
It was working a little while ago.
Okay.
Hold it down, hold it down. Anyway, you get, Pearl Street is labeled down at the bottom. Is it working? Okay, just hope, yeah, just Pearl Street running alongside where the Garner's first fire station is labeled, and then in red, just a proposal of how it could look. Obviously, we're, we're amateurs at this, so we, we just are dreaming at this point, and so that is something like what we envision. Of course, Main Street is up at the top of, of the map. We see a wealth of strengths for this site, including the fact that it would be located in the historic downtown, close to the railroad tracks near its original site, a major added walkable attraction for downtown goers whose priority might be recreation, sports, leisure time, or other cultural events, and this is an additional location for them, or of course, it could be a destination in its own right. Of course, we see that. One more draw for downtown. Another strength is it's a short distance to move it from where it is, that's relatively easy, I, I might say. The proximity, of course, to restrooms and space for parking, and the potential for even greater cultural opportunities, and we're dreaming, again, the planet of a town square concept, possibly, or historic park, like we've seen so many. We'll share some inspiration with you in a minute. Possibly locating the caboose there as well someday. So we're dreaming. These, these are some of our visions. We also would note at this time that we appreciate the council may have a lingering concern about overflow parking. We believe there is room for both the depot and overflow parking on that lot, and that alternative parking plans will and can develop over time. For now, today, we feel very strongly about this. The greater good is to satisfy a cultural void first with a first-rate downtown museum, with confidence that parking opportunities will emerge. Early in our planning, we assumed the town would appreciate a museum but would prefer a partnership in the business of planning and running it. To offer a perfect analogy right here in town, we have a wonderful community theater in the Garner Town Players, but I don't believe the town sees itself as in the business of operating a community theater. Yes, you support it and partner with them, but they run the theater. So with this public-private partnership, with the town providing the facility, our volunteers will operate the museum with flexible hours, complementing, not conflicting with other events, and further, we're committed to working collaboratively with all the downtown stakeholders. We have them in mind, and we, we speak of them constantly, Garner Parks Recreation and Cultural Resources, the Downtown Garner Association, the Senior Center, and the downtown businesses, and the civic clubs located down there, and residents. Garner Historic Areas Historical Society at work, just a sample of what volunteers will do, curate exhibits that feature such topics as, we love these topics, and there's so many more. Our agricultural roots, school histories, local sports heroes, Garner in wartime, our diverse culture, including African-American, Hispanic, Vietnamese history here, church histories, cemetery documentation, and we dream of a genealogy room to house research on local families. Kay Whaley's got lots of that behind her and under her belt already. We visited a genealogy room in Coats, I'll tell you a little bit more about that in a second. But beyond the museum exhibits, we'd like to erect historical markers, we would like to train youth as volunteers, we want to design walking tours, here is my passion and my personal favorite. Have the, go through the process to digitize the Garner News, the Garner Times, and the Garner Citizen, and anybody else that's ever put out a newspaper here. I worry about those little silverfish getting into all those old-bound issues and just eating up all the pages, or God forbid, a fire, and look at all the history that would go up in smoke. It just keeps me up at night. Our vision and our pledge is to transform our floundering iconic depot into a Garner History Museum, a cultural jewel we can all be proud of. Okay, here comes some fun pictures. We've, we've toured, we've visited, we've gone to museums, we've gone online, and there's, there's a whole other world, of course, online, and we've been in touch with the North Carolina Department of Cultural Resources, and we'll go real quickly through these slides. The first one is the Sanford Depot Park in Sanford. You see several things going on there. Next, that's good, that's good, you're fine. The next is the Coats Museum Genealogy Room. All those books that you see, those binders, have family history of the Coats people there. And not only is it genealogical research, families come in and bring their, their family Bible and their photographs from, you know, grandma's attic, and so those bound books contain such a wealth of information, and they tell stories about people coming from California to, to, just to visit the Coats Museum so they can look at their family history. It's astounding. The next one is Angier Depot Museum and Park. We also like the Fuquay Varina Museum Complex, pretty little caboose there. And this one is from our own depot inside the Garner Historic Depot. I'm not, we're not sure when that picture was taken, but you can see some exhibits already started, some artifacts there in place. And then here's a, a not-so-good inspiration picture. This used to be, this once was the, the Auburn Depot, of course, it's been torn down, it's gone. Some of the wood was salvaged and used in our depot for renovations, and maybe other things, I don't know. Okay, and now, as we wrap this up, we want you to envision the future with us. I'm gonna let Judy talk now. I know y'all are ready to hear Judy.
And I do want to add before we leave the topic of genealogy, that Kay has more than 100 families that she has already researched that would be ready to go right in that genealogy room. So go with us for a moment into the future. What does a Garner museum look like? It's a destination and an added cultural attraction, it's a place for kids, school trips, Garner baseball players and their family awaiting the next game. Full Bloom Coffee is a leisure, leisure time destination, and the museum is a casual stroll away, as it would be for patrons of food truck rodeos, pop-up markets, and holiday celebrations. Functions at G-PAC draw patients, who could, patrons, who could come here first? Old-timers gather at Tootin' Tale or Angie's and can add a museum trip to their morning, their morning out to catch a special exhibit featuring tobacco farming, Consolidated, Garner Consolidated High School, or Scotty McCreery, and that has made us a tourist destination. Volunteers of all ages report to their job at the museum. A visitor may ask, can you tell me where my great-grandmother is buried? We reference a genealogy book and provide that information. Can you tell me where Garner's first fire station was located? And we point them right next door. At the museum, residents and visitors get a sense of this unique place that is in Garner, a snapshot of our culture and of who we are and how we got this way. And finally, we've introduced our organization, and now we respectfully ask two things of you tonight. Can't talk and flick at the same time. First, move the Historic Depot to Pearl Street as recommended by the relocation task force. Second, recognize the Garner Area Historical Society as the partner organization for curating and staffing a history museum for the enrichment, education, and enjoyment of all Garner, Garner citizens and visitors. So ladies and gentlemen, this concludes our presentation, and we are happy to answer any questions.
What comments?
Yeah. Thank you, ladies, for your excellent presentation. I'm excited about what you're mentioning. History is a topic that I've long been intrigued by, even though I'm not a, a real super-good historian. I know one of the, and this is sort of just an academic question, the location that you're proposing, I don't, I don't have any problems with, but I will ask you, did you consider any other locations at all, or was this one primarily the focus, and you settled on it fairly quickly, and that's where you'd like to see it go?
We, the relocation task force looked at a number of different ones. I have that report with me tonight. We started out with five, and then it was narrowed down to three. The Pearl Street location, Avery and Garner Road, and then under the Water Tower. And we all felt, for reasons indicated in the report, that this would be the best spot. So our group, you know, we don't own property right now, we, we felt like this was a wonderful spot for it to be located. It's walkable to a lot of the businesses downtown, and we just felt like it's an excellent spot.
Thank you very much. And then the, well, the fairly close proximity to some recreation fields, that, that's not a concern to the committee, I assume?
No, certainly not to us, and I spoke with the chair of Garner Baseball, you know, as a potential neighbor, and he did not have any problem with it either, as long as any events we had didn't come, well, I was speaking with him as a neighbor, and in case we ever needed extra parking, that he would, we, you know, ask if we could use their facility, and it was like, you know, as long as it doesn't interfere with anything that they had going on.
Okay. And Mr. Mayor, while you've recognized me, I'll just make a comment or two. I, I went back and looked at some, I guess I should say, historical material, at least the material that goes back to 2010, the old historic downtown Garner plan, that's at least eight years ago. I know it mentions in that plan the idea of relocating the, the depot, doesn't always stipulate what we might do with it, but my point is, is that this is, this has been a concept that's been, been around for a while. a while. No action's been taken. The depot's still sitting where it has for some time. It's deteriorating where it is, and so some attention is needed. I'm one of those who, who's convinced that it's time, it's time to move on, it's time to do something. And this, this committee is taking that action and asking the council to work with them on that. From all I've heard, I can certainly be one that would support their recommendation.
Well, I am also a history, I have a lot of interest in history. We can't, we just cannot forget it, we cannot ignore it, we cannot leave it unrecorded. In today's world, there may not be a lot of apparent interest, but there will be, there will be. And if we don't preserve this museum, and preserves Garner's history, then future regenerations will blame us for it, and they will be sorry that we didn't do it. It's human nature to want to know where we came from and how we got here. And that will never change, no matter how modern the world becomes, no matter how many digital cameras we have that can take pictures. People still want to open a picture album, they still want to look at the pictures, they still want to know what happened here, who came before me, and, and what my place is here. I support moving the museum, excuse me, the depot, maybe that was a Freudian slip. I've watched it for years be hit and repaired, and hit and repaired. We are wasting our money continually patching it and not moving it. And so I would appreciate the work of the depot, of the, excuse me, the Historical Society, and I could support moving it to the place designated.
I was disappointed when I went by there a couple of weeks ago, and this blue paper was on the side of it. That building is on the main part of Garner. That was Garner back 40, 50 years ago. If we don't do something very soon, it will be that building, because it's going to deteriorate very rapidly. Sometime back, we purchased the property on Pearl Street, and we was told it was going to be used for parking. Well, at the time, this was not kind of moving forward. But after thinking it over and seeing the way that building is beginning to look, we need to go ahead and make some kind of arrangement to do something with the building soon. And I look around and see Ms. Whaley, I guess she got roots in Garner for everyone who live here. She did my family a couple of weeks ago, but she left one member of my family out, but I didn't say anything to her about it, but that's fine. But anyway, let's go ahead and get this moving and not keep moving it down the road next week, next month, next year, because it's history. The young generation that's gonna come after us will want to know about it. So I'm in favor of us going, moving on forward with it and see what we can get done. But one question, how many square feet is in that building?
Eight hundred.
Roughly?
Eight hundred.
Eight hundred. And I certainly appreciate the committee, what they're doing on this. Continue the work. I'll support you.
Thank you.
How about this end, right?
Well, I liked the beginning of the slide presentation when you talked about the Wake County Chitlin Club. You said there were no ladies in it, and maybe that's because the ladies are smart enough not to eat chitlins.
I wouldn't agree with that.
And the person that I remember eating on my wife is Mr. Green cooking them. Ms. Hudson would take us down there in the wintertime, we'd eat them several times during the year, but only in the wintertime. That's the only place, only person I ever ate them was Mr. Green. You know, the depot obviously needs some work and some repair. I think if we consider the site on Pearl Street, there's a lot of things to consider. One is, one reason we didn't make a lot of improvements to that as a parking space was the dramatic or incredible amount of money for stormwater. So I think if we would look to do this, maybe we would look to subdivide the lot, make the lot smaller. I know our engineering staff may tell us what may or may not be the best way to do that, to have the less, least impact, because we may have to put some amount of stormwater retention in, I don't know, I'm looking at John, we don't know yet. But if we're gonna, if we're gonna move it and have something that's designated just for the depot and designated parking, then we're gonna have to do a little something out there, and let the other parking kind of stay as it is. That's, that's one thing, is, is the cost impact, is how can we do it? That doesn't impact us as much as we thought we were gonna have to do at one time out there, by paving and curving over that entire lot, which was gonna be over $200,000. So that's something to think about, and also what the cost to move this will be. So, and other questions to be answered, I'm assuming since we're gonna get close to the Pearl Street building, that we wouldn't need ordering sewer in this building. I'm assuming that's what we're talking about, to help save more costs, which would be a dramatic, another dramatic cost, a significant cost to do that, so that, that can help from that standpoint. So we're gonna get these questions answered, the best location, how to lay out the parking, how to kind of separate it from the other parking over there, which is gonna be kind of left like it is for now. That's something to consider. But I think that's something, the questions need to be answered, and the cost. I know Amy said it's not that far to move it, but we gotta go to railroad tracks however we get there. Unless they go all the way into the bridge, I don't know if they can go into the bridge, the railroad bridge, I'm assuming they can't, assuming it's too tall.
May I say something?
Yes.
The report, the Relocation Task Force report favored the Pearl Street, you know, was, I keep saying, and one of the reasons was that it was the easiest to, easiest to move, is that forest, yeah?
It was. Get it on Main Street.
Cover one way or the other. When they said, ran, new ran road or same area street, one way or the other, it's gotta, gotta go to railroad tracks, right? And I didn't think of going to the bridge. So I, you know, we need to see all these numbers, and so we know exactly what the costs are gonna be. We need to know what those, you know, and plus, the repairs to building. I mean, we hadn't repaired the building on purpose, because we don't know, you know, if you can move it, you don't need to repair it. You move it because you may have to do some other repairs after you move it. So I think that's what was talked about, was to reinforce it for the move, and then once it got moved, you reduce the repairs that are needed. So, yeah, we don't want it to get in the condition of the Auburn Station. I remember the Auburn Station very vividly, when it got torn down, I reckon in the 80s. I reckon it's fairly known, sometime in the 80s it got torn down, but I remember it very vividly. Matter of fact, I was in a band that, a guy wrote a song about Auburn Station. No joke. So it's, it's, it sounds good. I, I think there's also a way we can, we can talk about saving history in Garner. I know that Rick Mercer, our PO, has talked about this before, about doing some videotaping. Some of our residents, whose knowledge and who are, are getting up there in years and videotape them, I know a couple of them, Ms. Phillips, Helen Phillips, and I know Bill Creech, have, they tell me things about that were on Main Street, and I'm like, really? I never knew this was there, and that was there, and this house was there, or there was a dry cleaner here, and all this other stuff. I remember the picture, I remember Town Hall, I remember going to the library on Main Street with this little boy, and when Town Hall burned, that's been a long time ago. But, you know, I remember when none of this was here, and Town Hall moved here, so.
If I can address one, something that you just said?
Yes.
That is one of our, we don't have, we did not put a whole list of here of all the different things that we want to do. That is one of them. Because I looked in the Blue History Book that you all have, I would say 90% easily, easily, of the people that were interviewed in that book are no longer with us. So that leads us to the goal of finding the ones that are still here. And we'd also like to go in and, if they are not already ruined, digitize the ones that were done for that history book.
Judy, can I say something? Back when Garner had historical, and we did it for about five years with joy, barbecue, we did one year, me with... I'm a star there for that generation that has gone past.
And, and Judy mentioned that most of the people in the book have passed away, and also most people who worked in the senior center who helped start the senior center have passed away. All those people, well, who drives back in the, in the 80s, so that's another history to tell. But anyway, I think there's, there's a lot of good here. We just need to get some questions answered and figure out what's the best way we can get it on, on the piece of property to use it, to also benefit the depot, but also benefit the overflow parking that we need.
Along with your presentation, Amy, and Judy, there was one line item up there about the last delay in this process was my direct result of me asking you to look at additional sites. And that, I would, I'll certainly admit to that. The purpose was, is, is to give some time also to, to do exactly what you've done and more, more than what I would have ever thought has accomplished. But I really wanted us all to, to focus on mission and a vision and a long-range plan, and with all of the folks that are here in support of it, y'all have done, you're to be congratulated with having this many people here in support of it, of the Historical Society. And so that you don't go unrecognized, and this is not, you just, I'd like for you to stand so you, we can see the total number of folks here that are in support of this entire effort.
And we have stickers? That is awesome.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you, thank you.
But as I say, you've, you've accomplished more than I thought would be done, but you have re-instituted the organization, you've got volunteers, your presence here, this enthusiasm, you've got support, this, with that many folks, this certainly moral and financial and historical support. You've got a plan, you've got a vision of what can happen. And that's, those are not easy things to accomplish. It, it takes a whole lot of effort to get to that point. I was not, I will certainly admit, six months ago, I was not settled on Main Street or Pearl and Main. But at the same time, my wife and I have driven by that site and got out and walked across the site just to get a feel for it, and it is a, an absolutely beautiful site. And with the mature trees and the overstory. And you, you talk about, Kay, of having meetings or gatherings to promote history. With all the open space without it getting too cluttered up, can you imagine this, the assembly of people that want to share items and putting up tents just to bring things out that draws attention to the overall potential of preserving history? My wife Barbara's here tonight, and she's certainly, she, she loves the part about the genealogy. Since she's been retired, that's been her, that's been her number-one outlet, and can work on it hours at the time, and loves it. Naturally, I have to love it as well.
I've learned to love it.
But at the same time, she escorted me to Fuquay and to Coates. We've been over to see, at museums there, and what they had to offer. I would invite people to go to, go to Coates in particular. You would never, ever believe what they've got by looking at the front of the building. It is simply, it's amazing. But it also shows what a town much smaller than us can do with volunteer effort, and that's, that's an inspiration in itself. But anyhow, the, your, your presence here tonight represents a lot of work that has already gone on, but it still represents a lot of potential. Let's face it, the town is not necessarily in the business of preserving history, but it, that is directly. But it certainly can support the preservation of history. And we can support it financially and with staff time, council time, providing the, yes, providing the land. So it seems like that, yes, the order of business is getting it repaired and moved, or moved and repaired, or repaired, moved, and re-repaired, whichever one it requires. And some, there's some costs associated with relocating it, but the town, town is certainly willing to gain that, or to provide that support. Yes, and, and when all said and done, I've changed my mind about the Pearl Street site, Pearl and Main, and whereas I don't know that it would detract from some future use of that general area, I think if, when it's done properly and preserved and handled like you, you were talking about, it can be a, a very much added amenity to the, to the whole area. Now, you mentioned briefly about, about where was the first fire station. I'm sure I've heard it plenty of times, but I did not know that the first fire station was a concrete block building. Never thought about preserving history in a concrete block building. But if that is indeed the case, then it offers a lot of potential that other folks here on council have, have mentioned, in that, in addition to the fact that it's got bathrooms, and certainly it's being used as an alternative means now, but that, that, that can be managed. But that will come in due time about identifying, more about the, the original fire station, so.
May I?
Go ahead.
Sometimes I just can't, I can't hold it back.
They're right on.
I have a photograph that I will pass around for you to see, and you don't see as much concrete, because it had four of the bay doors, so those doors had been closed in, you know, to make it, you know, usable for, for other things. So I'll just pass this around if anybody wants to see it, that's what it used to look like. But I, what, what we envision is that maybe some landscaping or some way to tie those two buildings in. I didn't realize how much history was behind that building, and have been kind of, you know, fascinated with it. So it, I've always looked at it as a record center and a concrete building, but it has more to offer than that.
Well, Judy, I want to say something. The other day, and to the administrative building, fire department, if there's...
Kay, we want you on record.
Yeah.
The other day, I went into the fire department to pay for my barbecue tickets, and the bell was there on display, and I asked Matt, I said, where did this bell come from? It had on there, "A gift to, by Garner Southern Railway, 1953." He says, "I don't know." So I started asking some of my friends, and they said, "That bell used to sit on that cinder block building."
And you can see it.
And it's in the picture. Then lo and behold, I'm talking to my husband, and he said, "Oh, up there was a 10-by-10 little room, and we would go up there and sit and report planes that were coming over, and call in to Raleigh and give our code name, and let them know that this plane, plane just passed." And then we got later with Gray Nose at, they had the sirens there at the fire station for civil defense, but later it was moved to Hudson's Hardware, and every, the first Tuesday of every month, at 5 till 12, it would go off.
Test.
Test. And you had to call at the time, you, they, the Hudson's, you had the number to call to call them to let them know it was working.
Log it in.
That's what you did.
Hey, keep finding things.
Let me finish my non-political speech, and that is not, that's not politics, that's just asking, recognizing the fact that you've got an organization, and you've got a vision, you've got a plan, you've got support, you've got all those things that'll make you successful. And that's what we, before we put 100 or $200,000 into it, let's face it, you needed to do this, and you've done it, and now it's, we can, we can proceed. I'm gonna ask that, this matter, with your representatives meeting with the town and Public Works, Rodney.
What's your idea?
And get an idea of how to move from, and come back with concrete plans on, on getting underway on repairs, getting it moved, and, and then, then we can do the formal approval at an appropriate time, soon.
Okay, Mr. Parry, you want to make a comment? After she comments, anybody in the audience, if they wish to go to the podium, address this item, get up and give your name and address. We ain't gonna stay here all night, still early.
Now, sir, I just have two, two statements to make. I moved to Garner 25 years ago, and for 20 of the past 25 years, I've been involved in bringing downtown alive again and restoring the depot and the historic aspect of the town town. To Mr. Kennedy's remarks about that he is surprised at how quickly the Historical Society has come together with their vision... with their vision and their plan, I'm going to say, never underestimate women on a mission.
Amen, amen.
Don't do that. And the second thing is, as I said earlier, for 20 years, I've been part of this movement. It may be in the background, but definitely there. And so to that and the conclusion that we've all come to now, I'm going to say, I told you so.
Mr. Mayor, with a motion being, I think they asked us for two things, if I recall. So I was going to formally move that. I think they asked that we recognize the Historical Society. Are you putting it up there now?
Yes.
Yeah, the first one is move the Historic Depot to Pearl Street and partner with Garner Area Historical Society so we can provide a Garner History Museum. I think the council is ready to do that, and maybe a motion's not in order, but.
Hold that thought. I'm going to see if anybody wants to speak.
All right.
Does anybody want to talk about it? Yes, hurry, I say, hurry.
Okay, you ready?
Y'all through? All right, good.
All right, well, I will move what I just said. That is, number one, move the Historic Depot to Pearl Street. I know Mr. Kennedy mentions getting together with the town staff and others to work out the logistics, but I think the big thing here is to agree to move it there and then partner with the Garner Area Historical Society so that we can provide Garner a history museum.
Second.
Motion is second.
Can we, sometime before we get too far, and I'll vote for a motion. Can we also get an idea of what it's going to cost so we're just not, just wind up writing a blank check? I don't think, I don't think that's a good business.
No, we need to condition it, that we need to get together with staff, we need to have a developed site plan. We can, we can say, you know, we can agree to partner with the Historical Society, and we can say, we can move forward with the process to move the Historic Depot to Pearl Street, but there are too many questions unanswered just to say we're going to do it, because it may cost one, two, three, $100,000 or more. We don't see a site plan, we don't know how it's going to lay out, we don't know about stormwater improvement if needed, et cetera, et cetera. So we can say, we can start the process of moving the Historic Depot to Pearl Street by answering all those questions. Because we're going to have to get, you know, we're just not going to plop it over there. It has to be laid out in a way that fits what they have asked for, to be accommodated, I mean, closer to accommodations of the Pearl Street building. And also, how do we make it so it's what it is and it doesn't, that and the other parking do not run together so you don't have people just running all over it? We need to have a site plan like we require anybody else. We require developers to have a site plan, and we got to have one too. And I reckon the town can do their own, but we have to have a site plan before we can approve it, I would think. Because we're putting something on the lot, isn't that not correct, staff? Don't we have to have a site plan? We're moving the building to a little piece of land.
This is not to slow it down. This is actually to speed it up and just get things in order so it can happen.
It's got to happen. We just can't move the building. We wouldn't let anyone else in town do that.
Okay, as with town. Good, good, Rodney.
Ms. Barringer had asked, Councilmember Barringer, to ask me and staff to look at, basically, what the cost would be, estimate. Not, you know, doing, I guess, the minimum amount of upgrades as far as stormwater and parking. And we did get a number, has a lot of caveats on it, but I look at it as a starting point. And it depends on the site plan and exactly where we put it and what other things come along with it. So, I mean, I can go through it if you want, or we can meet with the group.
Yes, put all, put all that together and come back and give us a plan that we can, we can approve a budget for.
There's a lot of caveats, so let's get some of the caveats. Let's get some of the questions answered.
Well, at the time, at the time we put this together, we didn't know exactly what the committee was going to propose. So now that we've heard what they're proposing, some of it is in line with what we, some of the assumptions that we made. But it would be better, you know, knowing what we know now, to put a better estimate together and a site plan so we'll know exactly where and, you know, what we're looking at.
I'm firmly in favor of moving the depot to Pearl Street, and I'm firmly in favor of partnering with the Garner Area Historical Society. And that's the concept, that's the, that's the basics that, yes, we need to do tonight. And we've got to move directly to these other things on site plan and the numbers involved in it so we can approve a budget and make things happen.
Okay, the motion is, I think it came from Mr. Marshman. How do y'all handle that motion? It got a second, so.
All the question?
No, it had a second.
It did.
I would just ask that you refrain, refrain the first one, just say, start the process to move it. You said, you said to move it, let's just start the process to move it.
The motion, good, need to reword it.
Because there's too much, other things have to happen before you can do it.
Well, I mean, I would disagree with that, but I mean, I think if this council goes on record and says, "We're going to move it," then we'll move it, Doug, Greg.
I know, but we're going to start the process to move it. Again, you're putting the cart before the horse. We wouldn't let any other developer do that in town. We had to have a site plan to come in here today, rezone some land, downzone land from R9 to R40. So it's the same, start the process. And that's what we're going to do and get the information. Then we're going to be back here in a couple of months or hopefully sooner than that and move forward.
I think, I think we can all agree. I'll stand with the motion as is, but I understand we have some logistics to work out on it.
Let's vote on the motion as is.
All right.
All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Hook it up. Y'all go home and start working on this.
On behalf of the four of us, we have worked very hard. This is wonderful news, and I want to thank you guys so much. I think this is a great thing for Garner. I think the audience speaks for itself. There's a lot of support here, and we're going to have artifacts coming out of the woodwork.
Y'all keep it, good work.
Thank you so much.
Amy, you have. And I imagine someone will be contacting me pretty soon about getting together, and we'll go from there.
Get Matt's over to Greenway. When they move. If they do move.
Excellent presentation.
You want to see that, John? Okay.
Page 38, wonderful.
Hey, Matt, you ready?
Okay, we'll get started on the next item on the agenda, which is to discuss the South Garner Greenway LAP application. So just a quick overview of our agenda. I'm going to give you a little bit of a quick update on the status of the project, you know, what's happened since the last time I was before you guys at the work session a couple of months ago. And then we really need to talk about how we'll approach the route situation, you know, which are the route options and the matching funds. And then I'll just give you a quick update on what, what'll happen from there on out. Really, two things that I need you guys to help give me some advice and take some action on tonight. One is to decide, and I'll get into this a little bit more later, only for the purposes of submitting the LAP application, what route, you know, what assumption we want to make about the route. Because we have to have some number to put in there, so we need to, we need to pick that. And then the second question is, we need to commit to matching funds. So we need to get some feedback from you guys on what you'd like that to look like. So just a quick reminder, and for anybody else in the audience that might not, might not have seen the original presentation, this is basically the same information that we shared at the work session. The map is formatted slightly different, but when we're talking about the South Garner Greenway, this is the project that would connect White Deer Park slash Lake Benson Park, depending on the configuration, and along Buffalo Road and eventually to the roundabout at Buffalo and Pandora. It would eventually connect to a White County Greenway, a future White County Greenway, which is in this vicinity here. The kind of yellowish-orange option here is a multi-use path. That would be common to all the route alignments. And then from here, then there's three options. There's this, this one is option A, this one is option B, and this one is option C. So anyway, that, that's not, none of that has changed. I just wanted to make sure everybody was on the same page. And also, these, these are the same cost figures that we showed you at the work session. So just, again, as a reminder, that the first column there, multi-use path, the orange, that would be the case for all of them, and then you would pick either A, B, or C to pair with it. And that would give you a sense of the, of the cost. We have, have done a little bit of escalation of the cost. I'll get to that in a minute, just as a reminder of where we, where we stand. Okay, so what's happened since the last time we've heard about this project? The, we were going to have a community meeting, and then the remnants of Hurricane Michael, you know, got, were significant enough that we decided that probably didn't make a lot of sense. There weren't a whole lot of people that were going to be interested in coming out to talk about a Greenway in the middle of all the rain and the wind. And so felt like it was not, not really useful to have a meeting only to have a couple of people show up. So we decided to delay that, that meeting. We are ready, I think, to pick the 25th of this month as the rescheduled date. And so we'll work with Rick to get that information out to the community next week. So we are, we will have, we will still have that public meeting. It would have been ideal if we had been able to have it in advance of today's meeting because that would help us make these decisions, but, you know, sometimes best-laid plans just don't work out. There are really two, I would, I would, I guess, think about this as sort of like two projects running, or two aspects of the project running in parallel. The, the main one is this feasibility study or conceptual design, which we hired McAdams to do. Nothing about the original scope has changed. We'll just have to delay the public meeting a little bit, but we'll, we'll still have the community meeting. We'll still get the community feedback. Still bring back to you all, you know, the options, narrow it down to a recommended route for you guys to consider. And if you agree with that, then that's, that's what we'll look for. But all that's still going to take place, no changes. It's just when we got to the point where we had a better sense of what the project was going to cost at the work session, we felt, okay, we need to look at other funding options. One grant possibility or external funding possibility is this LAP application, but the deadline is October 31st, so we kind of have to work on that in parallel. At the same time, the full process is playing out. So we're here today to talk about the LAP application part of it. We have gotten some feedback so far, just as we've gone through the process. I did present this to the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee, and there were eight, eight members there that gave us some feedback. Especially when, once we figured out that we weren't going to be able to hold a meeting, we put some information on the town's website, and nine people have contacted me directly based on that webpage. And we also put an online comment form, which we would, would have done anyway as part of the community meeting, but we just made it active sooner so that if people were interested, they could go ahead and comment now. And 22 people have commented already. So that's, you know, a pretty, pretty encouraging amount of feedback. It's, you know, we haven't finished the process, it's too soon to draw a lot of conclusions from that. But I mean, basic, generally, all but about four of the comments have been positives. It's a pretty, pretty strong level of, of support. People commenting about all, all different options, probably, if you were to count up everybody's preferences, maybe a slight preference for option B. But, but people have been supportive of all, all the different route options. And some people have said, "I'd be reasonably happy with any of them." So anyway, that, that's the kind of feedback that we've had so far. But again, we don't want to, don't want to get ahead of ourselves because we've got the rest of the community, community meeting process to go through. So that's, that's where we stand now. So in order to have, the LAP deadline is October 31st. So we've got to pick, we have to have some basis by which we're going to submit the grant. I think the best option, and my suggestion to you guys would be that we basically submit it with all three routes. The LAP staff, and, and when, you know, I've, I've talked to them about it, the Campo staff that administer the LAP program. And they understand the situation, and would be fine with us submitting the current map with three routes, which is good because that allows us to let the, the community feedback process play out like we would want. We do have to pick a, one cost figure, so, I mean, we have to pick, pick a cost figure associated with one of those routes as the basis for the, for the submittal. And so we feel like it'd make the most sense to pick the most expensive one because that, that gives us the most flexibility down the road. And so that would be option C. So that's what we've, that's what I'm suggesting that we do here. And again, that's not because we're going to go with option C necessarily. It's just the most expensive one, and that'd be the basis of it. The proposed construction year would be 2020, so I took those work session numbers and adjusted them for inflation. The work session, the consultant had put in a three-and-a-half percent inflation figure, and you all felt like that needed to be higher. So we bumped it up to 5%. We can bump it up to whatever number we want. Generally speaking, I don't want to make the project more expensive than it needs to be because that, that will hurt us in terms of getting the LAP funding. So there's a balancing point of, we want to make sure that we're giving a reasonable cost estimate in one that we're okay with living with, but we don't want to put such a big number on it that it makes it appear more expensive than it needs to be. So if you use a 5% inflation over two years to get us to 2020, that would bring the orange part, multi-use path, to about 1.8 million, and the option C portioned about 4.8 million. So total, that'd be $6.6 million, which is a lot of money. So have had conversations with Campo staff about taking this approach, and they, they would be fine with that. If we get more information before they've made their decision, we would provide that to them, and they, they could factor that, that in to some degree, so.
Madam?
Yep.
Go, we'll go ahead.
No, I'm happy, I mean, if you have a question now, that's fine.
Well, I may have asked you before, but once we submit whatever we do in the deadline, I believe it says the 31st, what kind of timeframe are we working on to know what Campo's going to do?
The spring? I mean, we, we may have some indication sooner, but I believe it's in March that they're, I believe it's March, give or take a little bit, when their, their board will approve the grants. So we, we could get a little bit of an indication sooner, perhaps. We might know if we're recommended or not, but I think before it becomes official, it would be, you know, roughly six months from now.
If that, if that is the case, then by March, this, this council would either then or soon thereafter, I guess, have to go on record of which, of which route we're going to, we're going to support.
Yeah, that's kind of that idea of the, kind of two things going in parallel. The, the process of figuring out which route we want to go with will probably wrap up sooner than March. I mean, we'll be ready to present that to you sooner than March. And so if you all are ready to make a decision, once the, once the consultant has finished their work, then, then I think it'd be appropriate for you all to, to do that, and, and we can share that information with the Campo staff. But that, that process, again, those, those things are, are not completely hooked together. So they, they will, I think they will coincide in a way that will work, but they, they aren't on the perfect schedule. That's just, you know, there's a once-a-year cycle for these grants, and that's just how it, how it played out. Okay, I'll, I'll keep on, keep on rolling. There is a database that you submit these projects in, and everybody, everybody that was interested had to submit at least some information because there was a pre-submittal meeting. And so today, I went and looked at the database and pulled the numbers so you can get a sense for which other projects are competing for this money. Now, keep in mind, these are not final, you know, our, we have some preliminary information in the database for our project, but it's not final, and I, you know, that's almost certainly the case for some of these others. Perhaps even all of the others will make some changes. So don't, don't put too much stock into this. The numbers will likely change, but it gives you some sense for what the, what the competition is. There are currently 12 projects in there, Garner's being one. There are 11 on the page here, and then Garner's is 12. There's about, and our project is not included in the total, and you'll get to that number in a minute, but there's somewhere in the neighborhood of $16 million. That number could actually go up. I mean, you can see Raleigh, for example, has a project in there at $2,000, which is obviously not the case. They just haven't put a, an actual number in there yet. So there's about $6 million of funding available in this category for LAP projects, and there's about, at a minimum, $16 million for the project, so I think it'll be pretty competitive. The match percentages are, you could, many of them are in at 20%. That, that number might change for these different projects. There's one as high as 57%, but most are 20. There's a 30, there's a 40, and a 57. So that's the, sort of the state of the competition, or at least what we know about it at this point. You have to put in at least 20% for match, so now's the time we'll transition to talking about the matching funds. You do get, you do get a better score if you put in more than 20%. So you've got to, you've got to weigh. So you've gotta, you've gotta weigh, you know, how much, how much you think that will help and whether it's worth it or not. If, if we jump down to the potential sources of matching funds, this is mostly straight from the work session. This, this generally has not changed with one exception, which I'll explain. But we can pull the money from the, the fuel savings from several years ago that we discussed previously. 750,000 from, that we acknowledge would be part of this project from the bond funds, money from Wake County, some unallocated bond funds left over or not yet designated from the other projects. All those numbers are the same as when we last presented to you. And then we had always, well, at the LAP, at the work session, we talked about taking the, paying for the multi-use path portion of this with street and sidewalk bonds. At the time, that was about 1.6 million was the estimate. So that was the number that showed up here. If you, if you escalate it 5% and then another 5% for a 2020 construction date, that becomes 1.8 million. So the only number that's different from the work session is the street and sidewalk bonds. And I did talk to Mr. Hodges about whether that would, whether that would cause any trouble with our known other projects. And felt like it could, the difference between 1.6 and 1.8 could be managed in terms of our bond, street and sidewalk bond commitments. And then the remaining funds, Parks, Fee and Lou funds were, always would've been variable. Just whatever, whatever we were short, that was one option for how we could come up with the difference. At the time, we had used option A as a, an estimate and that, that would've been about 1.2 million in, in Fee and Lou. In any event, as far as a recommendation for what we could use for match funding, I would just throw out for, as a, as a recommendation, that we could use everything on that list except for the, the Fee and Lou, since I know there was some, some concern about keeping that to use for other purposes. And so if you took all those other numbers on the screen there, that would come up, you'd end up at 3.495, about roughly 3.5 million. And that amount would be, well, I say would be our match. I'm about to get into a little bit of detail about how it would be calculated for the grant purposes. But, but that's the number, whatever number you all choose, but the recommendation would be that number. We commit to that for now, that that would be part of the project. And if we get the grant, that we would, we would put that money towards it. I figured you all might wanna know, if you, if you ran that through the process, what would, you know, what would our match percentage look like? Because you, you can see what some of the other people are, are proposing possibly as, as a match. And so it gets a, it gets a little bit technical, so bear, bear with me. But we're proposing to submit for construction only because that is generally, you know, if you, if your project is shovel-ready, it's, you know, it's more competitive. And so you, in theory, we could ask for design and right-of-way and construction, but we feel like it'd be a more competitive project if we ask for construction only. So those numbers that I gave you before that totaled up to 6.6 million, that was the, the total cost of the project. That included design costs, right-of-way, all sorts of other things. So when you, when you back that out, we've gotta cover that. So that, that 3.495 million dollars that we've set aside, we've gotta pull some of that out because we need to pay for, you know, the design work we've done so far, the right-of-way acquisition, future design, et cetera. So when you pull all that out, that would leave us with about 2.4 million. When you pull all that out of the construction estimate, that leaves us at a construction cost of 5.7 million. So in any, when you do that math, we end up with a 42% match. That could change a little. We're still tweaking it and if we can, I guess what I would say is I would, I would ask you all to commit to the, to the, the number at the bottom of this page, whatever, or whatever number you all, after the discussion, agree to. And then let us tweak the application to sort of optimize it so we get the best match. It would look very, very close to this, but I'm just saying, since we haven't quite finished the application, it could vary slightly. But in no event would we be talking about changing this base number. It would just be the, the mix. Anyway, so that, that'd put us somewhere in the neighborhood of 60-40, probably slightly better than 60-40, which would, if, if the current distribution of projects stands, you know, we'd be among the more competitive from a match percentage standpoint. There's a lot of other scoring that goes into it as well. So, in any event, just a reminder, those are the two, two things needed you guys to, to give us some feedback on. Just, we need to know what direction you want us to, to proceed in as far as the, the LAP grant. And I can get into the schedule and the next steps, but that's mostly what I need from you at this point.
Now, you said total LAP funds, the way it went this cycle, Matt, is about 6.2 million or 6. some odd million? Did I catch, I hear that right?
Yeah, the, the LAP, LAP is, that program is split into multiple pots of money. So, you know, Hatt's gonna get up in a minute, talk to you about some roadway projects. That's a separate pot of funds. The, what they call bike pad, you know, it's bike and pedestrian improvements, which is where the Greenway project falls, is about $6 million.
You would go to your, about fourth or fifth slide that's got the cost testaments on it?
The ones that we presented at the work session?
Uh, that, that one.
That one, yeah.
So if we were looking at option A, that you have to add 1.67 million to 2.87 and come up with something that's 4.5, 4.6 million dollars total. Is that correct?
Yeah, if you wanted to price out option A, you'd pick that 1.67 and you'd add the 2.867. You'd still have to escalate it like I talked about, but yes, that's, that's how you, if you were gonna price option A, that's what you would do.
And the number that you used in coming up with this 58-42 essentially was the 1.67 plus option C and put those two together.
That's right. I did that because it, in theory, it would, it would be most advantageous to the town to ask for the, the bigger amount and...
Sure, I understand.
Yeah, so that was the logic. But yes, that's what I did.
I'm just trying, just trying to get my head wrapped around. I'd just have to tell you plainly that we started off at a $750,000 project and now we're, and if you forget about the multi-use path, we're at above, we're at a $3 million And I'm just trying to keep my feet on the ground, get, stay grounded.
I mean, six and a half million dollars is more than we did for, for the lease stations, the four and a half million dollar bonds, plus the ball, plus other things. I mean, I mean, six, that's rivaling Town Hall. The cost of Town Hall, I mean, really, the whole cost of White Day Park was lower than $4 million. To develop it, buy it, develop it, do everything, four and a half million dollars or so. That's why I say it's so staggering to look at the numbers and just think, you go, good lord. I mean, I gotta, I gotta ask this question, Matt, about going for the biggest pot. So it's only $6 million and if we do what you said and we do the 42%, 58%, that's asking for roughly $3.3 million. That's asking for over half of it. And I'm just trying to figure out, I mean, I mean, maybe that's a logical way to do is to ask for the most, but you would think if they had these dollars, they would try to get the most bang for their buck. And if, if one project takes over half of it, I mean, you couldn't do the two most expensive projects. We, us and Apex have a very similar price project. I mean, that's practically identical, really. So, I mean, I just, I just wonder about asking for so much, knowing that the pot, knowing we're asking for over half the pot and some, I mean, they could get several projects and they could get six projects or more done here easily with that. And that's not including the one for Raleigh, which obviously is not correct, the lowball one. I, I just wonder about the theory of going for the most expensive and trying to get the most. Is that the, you know?
Let me piggyback on that. If we ask for the most, and I'm, I'm not saying I'm against that, but we ask for the most and Campo says, we like the project, we can't go with the 60-40 match, we can go with, if you put in, they, they, in order to, in order to try to accommodate a broader range, they would limit their funding to X number of dollars, whatever that amount is. And so we come back and say, hey, that's wonderful. We'll just scale back our project now and hold firm their LAP funding. And we'll, we'll, we went after C, but will now do A and expect them to hold tight on their amount of dollars. I'm afraid that they will reduce, they'll, if we reduce our project size, they'll reduce their grant by a commensurate amount. That's what I'm, I'm afraid of. Therefore, along with, with following up on what Grace says, if we ultimately think that we're going with A, then let's make our strongest bet with the one that we're not gonna get. It is still gonna be a good project. But if they reduce it, it only gets reduced one time, not, not twice. Because I really think that if we went after C and asked for, out of 60, six and a half million, we asked for, they put in four, we put in two and a half, and they come back and say, we can only put in two and a half million ourselves, then you're gonna have to reverse the numbers. Then we cut it back to option A, that two and a half will drop again. Because I think they'll, they'll make you, they, they won't say, no, you, you played the game and you're not, you're, you're not gonna load, you're not gonna load this thing up and trap us into holding a larger amount for a smaller project.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think that's correct in the sense that if, if the, if the cost of the project comes in lower, they are probably not going to keep their commitment the same while we get all the benefit of that. So I, yeah, I, I would agree with that. And we can, we can use a, a lower number and that would, in a lot of ways, that makes sense. The downside to that is, you know, we haven't, haven't let the process play out. We don't know yet whether we'd be able to get, get the property acquisition that we need to make option A work and, and option B and option C. So we are at some risk that if, if that doesn't play out, that we are, we have another decision in front of us, even if we get the grant. But if we're comfortable with that risk, it would probably score better as a result.
Can we go for the higher one midway through the process, amend our application? If we later in, in January or February, we, we say we, we've narrowed it down and we wanna go with B or we wanna go with A, can we modify our request before they make their final decision? Or is that a good strategy?
I, I don't know that, I don't know that we can modify our request mid-stream, but I think if, let me think how to say this. If, I think if they approve us as a project and then we have finalized everything and it's come in slightly less expensive, then we, we would be able to renegotiate what that would look like. The opposite is theoretically true. If it came in, if we submitted it at X amount and it came in more expensive, we could have that conversation with them, but there's usually a, a penalty.
But it's gold.
So that, we don't generally want to be in that position. I, I don't know that they would technically speaking amend our application. I think that would just be, you know, we would provide them with additional information and then if it got to the stage that it was approved, then we could finalize numbers once we have a final design.
I would think that if you amended the application a month ahead of time and reduced the request, they would welcome that.
I would think so. I just don't wanna speak for them. Cause I, I don't, I don't know technically speaking whether they would consider our application to have been amended or, or what. But it, yes.
I don't know either, don't know the game. Just raising the question, just trying to figure out you...
Yes.
Which, where to land.
Matt, I think one of the challenges is the process to evaluate the projects, even though we may not get a vote by, until March, we, by about January, they know what projects are gonna score. So that means there's a lot of very quick analysis done between October 31 and beginning of January. So there's really not much time in the process for amendment. And I, I think what, what Jeff and Hatt may be, may be able to add some to this conversation, but the commitment we're making is to a percentage match, not a specific dollar match.
Matt, do you remember anything?
I think they got to look at the dollars, cause...
But, but, yeah, but, yeah, yes, a percentage, but what percentage do you pick? Sure, that, that's dollars. If you pick 50% with this number and 40% with this, it's still dollars. I mean, you can commit a percentage to dollars. If it's the highest project, you do 40%. If it's a low project, you do 50%. It might be the same amount of money.
Let's see what Sam has to say. He's had to all those meetings.
In, you might submit it this year.
Sam.
Sam.
And that's a great possibility.
Since there are so many competing, competing projects, you might submit your application with the understanding that it might not work out. And you might start with a smaller percentage this year and up it until it works. So, but I, I don't know. I don't know. That's, that's an option that you could consider, but...
Well, it seems like...
They have a lot of, lot of other products.
Thank you. It, well, I mean, could, could this play into the process? I mean, it sounds like we're sort of trying to figure out the system and see what works best for us. But, you know, could, could, could a town submit a project at a certain cost, understand the percentage and saying, this is what we'd like, but it's kinda based on their expectation of what they're gonna get? And then if, then if they don't receive what, what they had hoped for, would it be legitimate for them to turn around and say, well, because we didn't get what we had hoped for, we're gonna have to scale back? So, you know, that's the reason we can't stick with the original amount that we, that we gave you when we first applied? Does that make sense?
Are you, I might need you to, to clarify. I mean, I, I think if, if we, if we came back with a radically different project, I think that, that clearly would, that would not fly. I think if we're talking about adjustments within the general concept that we're talking about, I think they'd be much more open to that conversation.
Yeah, yeah, no, I wasn't talking about a radical change, but I'm, I'm saying if you, if you wanna go for all the gusto, based on the premise that you hopefully will get the, the, the amount of percentage of dollars that you, that, that the LAPs would provide. But if you don't, you know that you may have to, you may have to then cut back your project because of the cost? I don't know. But you don't have the answer there.
Question, Matt. You said on the multi-use path, the orange path, we basically, that, that's not part of the process. That's, we're gonna pay for that with a street and sidewalk bond. Is that, does I understand it correctly?
That was the concept, yes.
So the 1.67 basically is gonna, except for, is gonna wipe most of that out. Kind of wash, wash it out.
Yeah, because when, when you escalated it, yeah, that would be a, that'd be 1.8.
So basically, sidewalks, the total of 3.495 million, you have to eliminate the 1.8, but that takes care of that one chunk. So basically, we're asking for a percentage if you did option C of 4.416 million dollars. So, all right, he's shaking his head no. So tell me what I'm doing wrong.
So I, I think the idea is that if you're using a percentage of sidewalks and bonds funds, that would be part of your match towards the overall total project cost. Right? So the overall cost that we are submitting for bike, for this particular project is 6....
You're telling me the panel?
Right.
Okay.
And...
The 1.8 is a chunk of that.
Right.
Okay. But what you're basically washing off the orange part, that's basically what it's gonna do, is wash it off.
But it makes our percentage a higher percentage.
High percentage.
But this is not a street and sidewalk project. This is a greenway project. Will they even recognize the fact that we're trying to, will they recognize that we're trying to put in a, a sidewalk project to make our numbers look better? Or they say, sorry, good try, but stick to the greenway part? And is that what we should be looking at?
So, so the way it works is they don't ask for exactly where the matching funds are coming from. You're, you're, basically what you are, in your submittal, what you're obligating is we are matching at a 40% or we are matching at a 35% of the total cost of this project. What bond or where in the town budget that money comes from, they, I don't think they necessarily look at that in that detail. They just need to know that you are, once you've submitted that application, they need to know that you are obligating that dollar value associated with that percentage towards this project.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Hatt, but the fact that that sidewalk and not technically greenway, that does provide connectivity and it probably helps us that that could potentially help connect to a future Wake County greenway? Using that?
I, I think there is some connections that it would help with because that's why we're including the entire stretch and not looking at just the trail portion of it.
I mean, that, that multi-use path would qualify for this category of funding even if we weren't putting the rest of the greenway in. So we're not trying to put two different things that don't qualify and both of these would qualify independently within this pot of money. We're just adding them together for impact.
It took a multi-use path, it's a 10-foot wide asphalt base, not concrete. The multi-use path is 10-foot wide asphalt base, not concrete base, right?
Yeah, it is really not.
We're implementing pedestrian improvements, which all, all of these are.
Includes all of these amenities. A bike, a bike route would qualify, a sidewalk would qualify, a greenway would qualify, and a multi-use path would qualify.
Some of the competing projects specifically say sidewalk, so.
Yeah, they, you, you could have submitted, yeah, this is technically a multi-use path. Because it's along the side of the road, it is similar in many ways to a sidewalk. So, I mean, you can kind of equate it in your mind to that, but it would feel slightly different. But, yeah, regardless, it's, it's an eligible project.
We're still having a hard time coming up with this 6.6 million dollars for the sidewalk. I'm just telling you. That's, that, God bless America. I mean, that's almost as much as town hall costs. Good lord.
That's the question I'm really wondering, really, council, are we willing to get behind a six and a half million dollar project that started off at 750,000 dollars? And if we are, then fine, we go for the gusto. And if we aren't, we, we, we start sizing up something that we're willing to get behind. But I think that's ultimately, we got, we, we got, we're going to be asked, we have to come to grips with it ourself. Six and a half million or something less.
Given, uh, I mean, there's stream crossing, I mean, it, I, I think we should think about what's, I, I'm not 100% sure from a technical standpoint, what's something, you can always do other greenways, and this is a particularly expensive and, and a somewhat difficult one to have picked to start with. I, I don't necessarily know that we can say, well, we, we want a $4 million version of this and make this specific project work. It might just have to be a different greenway.
Okay.
I, I'm not saying for sure, but I don't, I don't know that we can carte blanche say that because there's some significant technical challenges to this that we're going to have to deal with one way or the other if we keep a route that looks similar to this.
Yeah, we're going to take a break at nine o'clock. Can we do anything with that motion? Taking a break, we're taking a break now, do it then. No, wait till, we're going to break right now. Right now. Do y'all want to act on the motion on this agenda?
I don't think we really have.
You don't have a motion to act on, I don't believe.
What's the action considered? To do nothing?
We want to finish this before we go on break, or?
That's what I'm trying to do.
If the gentleman, if, if, I'm listening to public camera, I reckon if the gentleman asks questions, you can wind up speaking.
Well, why don't, right, go ahead and make your comments.
I don't know if you was going to break.
I don't know.
And I'm sure if we had Michael come in and disrupt, we would have already done to help all of you get into it. So that's unfortunate for the way it turned out. I was not aware of.
Name the address, please.
Some of us were at the original meeting some time back when we had this original discussion and we had a lot, a lot more attendance in the audience. And we don't have a lot of people here tonight because the historical side did a wonderful job of mobilizing, so, and commend you for that. I'm trying to understand. I'm Robert Crew and I live at 118 Meadow Oak Lane. I have inputted into Matt's program and he's given me a great response back. So I know what you're supposed to be doing tonight. It's considering whether to go to a grant going forward. Grants are not easy to go with and they're very hard to meet and they're hard to understand.
Compared to.
The grant process is complex. However, tonight, for the first time, I learned about a future Wake County connection for a greenway. And the, the, you're, you're having trouble embracing the amount of money and what's in it for me? And I heard you compare it to the police station and all these things for value and what's in it for me? Is there a possibility that when the greenway comes in from Wake County, there's a better way to connect and take advantage of that and still allow us to have some money to be spent toward that? And that's not part of what you've done already, I realize. That's outside of the thinking, but I think because of the reaction I've seen here today with the different people in the council, you guys need to understand what it is and are you ready to make a motion tonight? And the submission deadline is the deadline. October 31st is a hard stop.
It's not going to change.
It's not going to change. And it can move out and have us do it again a year from now if the money still are available with, with the town of Garner. So that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you for your input. What does the council want to do? We're still going to take a break sometime. Well, I, you know, I, I, obviously, when, when Mr. Kennedy, uh, you know, puts it in the context that he did, that if you, if you talk about initially starting with, uh, with 750,000 dollars as a, as a project that you're going to complete, do a greenway for, and we've talked about this for a long time, and all of a sudden, uh, you know, you're talking about, um, a $6 million project, I mean, under most circumstances, that would cause fear and trembling, I guess. And, um, so, so, so I have some, I have some, some real problem with that. There are other options that are less expensive, which, um, would cause me to, to, to fall back to, to another position. We don't have, I haven't heard much public input regarding, uh, what is the preferred route, even though we've heard in the past that probably for certain, uh, communities over there or neighborhoods, the, um, the one that runs along the bridge, which is the most expensive one, is a, is a, is a preferred one. That's part of the dilemma I have is, uh, is, um, the most, maybe the most preferred one is the most expensive one. So I'm, I'm, I'm a little bit in a quandary. I, I know if we're going to, I mean, we're working with a deadline, so we, we can't, we can't squander and keep talking about it and decide to do nothing.
Here's where my issue lies. And, and again, yes, it started at 750, and we've added things to it, so it's gone up in cost, I realize all that. The, the multipurpose way, I think, is wonderful. He just did that, he found me. I think that's a start and put the rest, put the other in a future bond referendum. That's what I would suggest, but anyway. My issue's this, is I had to beg, borrow, jump up and down on the tables the last two or three years to get money to pave streets. We had to raise vehicle fees this year to pave streets and we're going to do a stormwater project, and one of them put off almost 20 years. That's where I had the issue. We need to pave our streets and fix our stormwater and that money that we're going to do is not even close to touching how much this is. That's my issue, is that we have those infrastructure needs that need to be done. One of the projects in, in Cloverdale is almost 20 years off for a stormwater project. That's going to get done, we're moving forward, thank goodness. But I just have that issue, is that those, those things need to get done and I practically had to jump up and down the table to get it done. And that's why I'm doing this whole project, I just have an issue with, because it's just so much bigger than what we thought when we did the original bond referendum. Again, I think the multipurpose path is wonderful because it, it starts, it at least continues a sidewalk coming up late more, it comes up to a certain point, that's a start. But, uh, the whole project, I think, is something, because of the cost, you may look, may have to look and put it in the future bond referendum. I'm just saying. It's so much more expensive than it was originally considered. I mean, again, you ask for voter approval for 750,000 dollars, if we're talking 6 and a half million dollars. I don't know how many voters, if they knew that, would approve it then. They may come out and say, no, where can we else we use that money? Can you do sidewalks somewhere else or can you, you stormwater improvements or pavement? That's the issue, is like, I see what Buck's saying about the money. This is what you asked for in approval. Yes, town hall costs more, police station costs more, direct center costs more, but it didn't cost five or six or seven times more, it cost a small percentage more. That's the issue I have in spending all this money on that project. Because it's gone up so dramatically. And other places in town that have, we have other needs. That's my biggest issue with the whole thing, is it's increased nine times. And I just have a hard time with that. No, no, nothing else in the bond referendum has increased nine times. Town hall, police station didn't cost 35 million dollars, town hall didn't cost 70 million dollars. It just didn't, they just increased incrementally.
It is an expensive project. And I think even, I think greenway projects are far more expensive now than they were then, even, even considering that, I, I'm not, obviously, in hindsight, that 750,000 estimate was probably not.
It was atmospheric extraction.
So, I mean, so it would, it would, it would help, it would help the explanation tremendously if we had gone through a process like this back then and we were only dealing with the normal escalation, and that's not the case. But I, it, it is expensive. I guess I would say that if, it's probably not going to get significantly cheaper if we wait for another bond referendum. I mean, this is going to be an expensive greenway segment whenever we decide to tackle it. So that, it's a reasonable thing, you guys are trying to balance and, and I, I would certainly understand whatever direction you take, but I, I do think we, we've got some, some money from Wake County, we've got potential partner money with LAPP. If, if we feel like the time is right, I think that, that's, getting, getting that much help on an expensive project like this is, um, is, is significant. I, I think the, the cost of greenways generally are going to be between, I mean, on average, are between a million and $2 million a mile. So I mean, there's, there's.
I mean, I look at further down the agenda, we talk, we can talk about the, the White Oak, Hebron Church, Ackerman Road intersection, and I mean, our, our percentage are, are calling, I mean, the total cost is actually looking at one and a half million dollars, which is what we got to see, and what our contribution would be a portion of that if we get the LAPP request. I'm just saying that that's a whole intersection we're going to prove for a fourth of this. And you could do four intersections. That's just, and you're right, the greenways have gone up because demand's gone up, so therefore it's driven it up. But again, I don't know if you put this before the voters today, if they'd say, okay, it's going from 750 to 6 and a half million, let's hold on it. Now, true, we did, you did add the, the multipurpose path, but that's beneficial for it, it makes it even better. So I would think most people, if they liked the greenway, would like that because it connects down to Van Dore Pines and will eventually connect to the Wake County Greenway, which will, is supposedly, I think, going to connect to Lake Wheeler, some.
Correct. Lake Benet and to Lake Wheeler is the concept there.
Yes.
Jackie and Kathy, please jump in.
It's a tough call because it, that is an awful lot of money compared to what we expected it to be. And, and when we passed the bond referendum, that wasn't so many years ago, so costs have gone up quite a bit. On the other hand, the folks over there have been begging for a path, a walkway of some kind to the park for years. So we have some kind of obligation to help meet that need. I'm just kind of at a loss as to how much it costs as well.
I think we all are. Y'all ready to take a break? 10 minutes, 10 minute break. I'm tired.
Take me to break this time.
We're going to really do it.
I wish, I, I understand the dilemma that you all are facing. It's probably among the most expensive greenway segments that, that we would ever come across. So it's, in, in that way, it's a, it's a particularly difficult one that we're venturing into now. And I, I really wish that we didn't have the, the LAPP deadline for that, you know, that funding coming up on us like we do, because that way we can just kind of let the process play out. You, you could always choose to not pursue the LAPP funding this year. I mean, it comes around every year. I would delay the project, but you could choose to do that. You could choose to just have the community meeting, let the process play out in terms of choosing a preferred route and getting a cost estimate and then just see where things stand. You would just need to know that we are passing up on this particular external funding opportunity to help with the project. But it's, it's clearly, um, it, it seems like it's something that you all are not ready to make a decision on, so I think that, that would be one option to help with that dilemma.
One thing we want to consider, oh, I'm sorry.
No, I was going to say, let's just table this right now and get to the other three issues, which are also LAPP funding, a different pot of money, and talk about those and then come back. Because I mean, we've seen all these numbers before, well, we've seen these numbers before and we've seen the Hebron Church Road, White Oak before, we haven't, I know the other two are, is detailed, but I would just say, let's just, let's move on to the transportation and maybe we'll come back to that.
Yeah, I'd hate for us to make a snap decision either way without hearing these other things. All of these are different pots of LAPP funding, but the Garner's match is all one pot of Garner. Now, it might be in some different funds, but it's all coming out of Garner and we, uh, we need to see the broader picture and then we can, we'll make a better decision then.
Okay, we got number two tabled. Number three is the Hebron Church Ackerman.
And what we're going to do with those, Mr. Mayor, is Hatt's going to cover, um, several, the next three LAPP project discussions, and I think he has a desire to switch the order. Are you good with the order? Okay, all right.
Okay.
While he's setting up, I, I was just going to say, as we look through these three LAPP projects he's about to present and the one we just talked about, one thing we want to consider and staff talks about is we want to be really sure about which ones we apply for, because we don't want to be in a position of, uh, being accepted for the grant and turning it down because that could look bad for us in future grant cycles. So with that being said.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. So as Rodney mentioned, I'll be presenting the three other roadway projects for a potential lapse in middle. Uh, the first one is White Oak, Hebron Church, Ackerman Intersection Improvements. We've talked about this quite a bit now. We are currently in the design plans portion of this project. We are nearing about 25% design plans, so we have more updated cost estimates. Just quickly walk you through the LAPP cycle. On August 15th of this year, they opened the call for projects. By September 10th, we had to have the pre-submittals in for the projects we were considering. And October 31st is the deadline for final submissions to keep projects or remove them from consideration. February, March of 2019 is the notice of selection, but like John mentioned, by early January, mid-January, they normally have a video of the scoring selections and then it goes through their TCC and executive board for approval. On September 19th, the town staff met with Campo staff for a pre-submittal meeting on this project. We talked about the work completed to date, uh, we talked about the design plans, we talked about NCDOT meetings that we have completed on the roundabout and the design plans for the roundabout, and we discussed the LAPP funding request for right-of-way and construction for this project. So I'm going to walk you through the potential discussions as well as a, the scoring criteria for roadway projects. So we are seeking council's agreement on a local match percentage towards the right-of-way and construction phase of this roadway project. Just to give you a summary like, uh, Matt did, for the roadway side of projects, the total projects submitted, including our Jones Sausage realignment and grade separation, which I'll talk about next, is about 29 million, and the Campo LAPP 2020 budget is 17 million. So the request overage is about 12, 12 million there. And if you take the Jones Sausage Road project out, it's a little bit less, it's about 8 million overage at that point. So for this project, the total estimated cost for right-of-way and construction phases is 1.375. And the 25% contingency on construction cost is required by Campo for the LAPP program to make sure that we're factoring in contingencies that might come up by the time construction comes around. And the total estimated for construction management is 100,000, and that was based on a little bit more than 5% of the construction cost. So we got to a total project cost of 1.8 million. If you were to have the 20% local match, the town contribution would be 360,000, the LAPP contribution at that point would be 1.4 million, and you can kind of see how that lays out as you increase the match percentages. I will walk you through the scoring criteria to basically get to our staff's recommendation, and I apologize, this is going to be slightly different from the actual staff reports that you guys, that you got in your packets.
Yeah, this is, that's problematic.
Because we had some, we had some changes. So the total score for a roadway project is, total possible score is 80. Local priority is 10 points maximum, planning consistency is another 10 points, and prior agency funding is 10 points. For this project, uh, we are putting in a total of 10 for the local priority, and you have 15 points that you can allocate towards roadway projects. We're putting in all 10, which is the max that you can put in towards the project. The planning consistency is based on the type of project and the MT, the transportation plan horizon year for capital area MPO. But since this is a safety project and an operational improvement project, we get full 10 points on that as well. Prior agency funding is based on how much funding Garner has gotten, the bait, uh, through the LAPP program in previous years, and it's calculated per capita over a five-year span, which we're at about eight out of 10 on that. The highway effectiveness score of the project is where it gets a little bit more challenging to see how the project is going to score. The benefit cost portion of this category is broken down based on the LAPP funding match and the requests that you're asking for. So that's where they factor in the time and cost savings, as well as cost savings for the LAPP program in particular. So you see, that's a total possible point of 50. The volume capacity ratio, it, we're estimating an eight out of 10 on that. The benefit cost, like I mentioned, would be scaled to all the other roadway projects that are submitted, so that's a little bit more difficult to calculate. The APHWA crash reduction factor, again, because this is a safety and operational improvement project, we're estimating a 10 out of 10 for that as well. And the EP, EDPO score from a TAS report, which is another safety report that the NCDOT runs, uh, that's scaled based on all the roadway projects that are submitted as well. We would get at least some amount out of the 10 for that. We would get at least some amount out of the 10 for that. So looking at that, we have an estimate of 46 out of 80 total possible points secure with a high level of confidence on that, that we are getting those 46 points towards this project. 30 possible points remain for the scaled portion of the scoring, and if we get just about 1/3 of those remaining scaled points, that would bring our total score for this roadway project up to 56. And I've highlighted, in the past three years, through the lap roadway side of things, what the scoring projects scored, between 46 to 58. Last year, there were six projects that were awarded. 49 to 54, three projects awarded in 2018, and 36 to 58, eight projects awarded in 2017. So based on that and staff's analysis, the project should score relatively well on all criterias. And even though in my staff memo that I presented, and in your packets, I'd said we might want to go with a 25% match, I think, looking back at all the other analysis that we completed since then, we believe that a 20% local match should secure enough scaled points in the benefit-cost subcategory, as well as the other safety subcategory that is scaled to keep this project highly competitive and probably get selected. So at a 20% match, you would be obligating 360,000 towards this project, and the lap funding match would be at 1.44. And that is for the right-of-way and construction phases combined.
You waiting for some feedback from us?
Yes.
I would so good with 25. We want to get this done. I'd rather be safe and sorry, but like $90,000, not talking 6 and 1/2 million dollars.
It's affordable.
Affordable, yes.
I don't like bank shots. I don't like reverse layups. I like slam dunks. Something other than 20. I don't see, we're talking about such a small amount of money, and this is so important. And this is a manageable project here. Good Lord, B, I don't want to wind up being, we're, we got this thing finessed, and we got it all down finite, and then miss it, and it's like, well, no. Let's shoot the sucker right between the eyes and kill it, get it done.
Hell, yeah.
So if you're for the slam dunks, does that mean we start calling you fire slam examiner?
I was never in that category.
I was gonna say, since Mr. Kennedy's, since Mr. Kennedy's using sports lingo, and I think we're in football season, I'm gonna say I prefer touchdowns over field goals, but at any rate.
Go and can plus four.
The 360 sounds reasonable, and I agree that it's a project that needs to be done. I could support that.
Anything else? Any questions?
I just want to point out that, again, we would, we need a firm recommendation for exactly what percent match we want to go in with, because that's the committed match that the town can't change after we've submitted the project on October 31st. And by October 31st, if we get a little bit more updated cost estimates, and the project goes either slightly higher or lower, we need to be aware that that 25% or 30% match, whatever we decide, is what that percent, the percentage that comes out of the total cost.
I want to say that 25, between 25 and 30, I mean, half million dollars again on this project, again, is for the impact it will have, the number of cars that travel by there every day, the impact, the safety feature, you got two schools down there. I mean, that's, you go with 25 or 30, solidly.
That's your number, Jackie and Kathy.
I can go with 25.
I can too. Very, 25.
We need a formal motion hit.
Mr. Mayor, move that we recommend the staff to do a 25% match on the project that Mr. Patel has just proposed to us. Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Hall and favor vote by Senator Allen.
Thank you.
You'll kind of hear.
Right, so the second project that I want to talk about is the Jones Sausage Road widening realignment. This is a little bit more of a challenging project, and a little bit more costly here. So the purpose is, I mean, again, to review the lap application initially. Our idea was to potentially just go in for right-of-way in this lap cycle, but we haven't completed any design plans on this, and that's difficult to have a right-of-way estimate for and apply that towards the project. So when town staff met with Campbell, all the other lap schedules remains the same, so I'm not gonna go over it. When town staff met with Campbell's staff, we had discussions regarding how to best advance this project because of the level of constructibility costs, as well as the number of stakeholders that will need to be involved in this project. So I'm gonna start out with the spot process, which is the statewide prioritization process. The grade separation of Jones Sausage Road at the railroad was submitted in this most recent spot process with DOT at 17.7 million. We don't know what the assumptions that were made for that project were, if the grade separation was a bridge over the railroad, or if it was a tunnel, or the railroad going over the road. So the project did not score as high as other rail projects in spot, and Campbell's staff indicated that the spot process still remained as the best source for funding that grade separation part of this project, and that there was things that we could do in the next spot cycle to try to help that score better. And some of that is design work initially that could help go towards that project, or just better selecting rail projects that are submitted by Campbell to help scale the scores a little bit. And they did identify that they would work with us to help better the chances of that project scoring through the spot cycle, the spot process. We also, through that meeting, learned about a similar project that Town of Cary had at Carpenter Fire Station Road realignment and grade separation over the railroad. On that project, that was a $30 million project, and the design costs for that were about 2.5 million. And that project started in 2013 or 2014, a few years back. So some of the costs sort of have changed since then, I guess. And we've worked with one of our on-call consultants that we selected recently to provide you with an estimated cost for Jones Sausage Road widening, realignment, and grade separation. We believe roughly between 30 to 35 million for the entire project, including construction potentially. The design costs at 2.5 million, and right-of-way costs at 2.5 million. So as you see, the 30 to 35 million exceeds the typical annual lap budget for roadway projects, unless we were to make a really high percentage match, somewhere 75 or maybe even higher, to try to get that to score well. But based on the high overall construction costs and conversation with Campbell, we think that the grade separation of Jones Sausage Road is recommended to stay within the spot process. And instead, what we can do is look at the Jones Sausage Road as two separate projects. The widening of Jones Sausage Road from the Garner Technology Site, where Amazon's coming in, south to east Garner Road as Project A, and then Project B would be realignment of Jones Sausage Road and grade separation, bringing it down to 70. So I am going to walk you through potential scoring of Project A. And again, this is something that I'm highlighting as something that we would probably do in next year, because the lap cycle this year is upon us, and we don't have enough design data to try to get this project into the lap cycle this year. So local priority points, again, we could put a full 10 points next year on this project. At the planning consistency level, we get 5 out of 10 on this project, because in the MTP, it's in the second horizon year for their plans. It's not in the first horizon year, so we don't get the full 10. The prior agency funding, if we get Ackerman, White Oak, Hebron Church awarded, those points for us would go down from 8 to 6 next year, just because we got funding for, if we were to get funding for White Oak, Ackerman, Hebron Church intersection. And then going into the highway effectiveness, again, the volume-capacity ratio is at 8 out of 10. The benefit costs, when we were to do it next year, we'd have to discuss the local match and try to identify where that potentially could go on the scale part of things. The crash reduction factor is at 6 out of 10, and that was looked at based on widening and adding a median. And the EDPO score, we'd have to run next year when we were about to submit that project. So again, estimating for next year, that would be a 35 out of 80 total possible points with a high degree of confidence, and we would have a remaining 30 scale of points that we would probably need about half to bring the total score to somewhere in the 50s and be competitive with that. And those ranges are highlighted, again, for what projects have been approved and awarded in the last couple of years. So based on staff's analysis of the scoring criteria, the original project for right-of-way only for both A and B will not score high because of the scale and the weighted portions of the scoring. Actually, one of the things that I didn't mention is, for the highway effectiveness category, if you're going in for just design and right-of-way phase, that score is scaled to 50%. So instead of a total of 50 points, your score automatically drops down to a total of 25 points that you can get within this category, based on what phase you're at. And in the three years of the awarded score range, only one project, that is the 36.91, was a right-of-way only project that got awarded. Everything else had a construction component to it. So in order for Project A and B to score well in both the lap and spot process respectively, the town may have to consider a similar approach as White Oak, Hebron Church, Ackerman Intersection, and complete some level of preliminary design with town funds. For Project A, design cost estimates for the widening of Jones Sausage Road from Amazon South to East Garner Road is about 1.3 million, which includes a conceptual study for Project B and identifying, or setting the intersection at US 70. So staff's recommendation, I guess, is to endorse breaking the project into two and recommend further discussion of options, either at another work session or now, if we're willing to have that discussion.
I believe that's a good recommendation, because there's a lot to cover. Break it into two and discuss it more at the retreat. Sounds like a winner.
So we're, are you saying postpone, postpone this whole project?
Well, I'm not saying to postpone the project completely. I think the second bullet here speaks to it, is we probably do need to consider, for future scoring, I don't think we can submit the project just for design and right-of-way. So at some point, we're going to have to complete some level of design to help the project score better, either through the lap process or even at the spot process. The grade separation would score better as well if there was some level of design completed on it.
And the estimated cost for doing that right now is about 1.3 million dollars.
For Project A, and if you wanted to do design for everything, it's about 2.5.
Well, but 1.3 would include a conceptual study of Project B and a realignment, just conceptual, but it's a start. At least it would get Project A designed, and give us some thoughts and ideas about what.
Project B.
And so we'd be, we'd be paying for design in any event, and be going after construction dollars.
Right-of-way and construction dollars.
So.
This would put us into next year's cycle for laps.
Yes, well, and we would definitely need a year to do some of the design work anyway, so that actually works out in the, you know, lap cycle to where we could take this next year, if council wants to start working on the design of either Project A or Project A and B together as a whole, and have something by next year to look at potential considerations for a lap project.
And Hetz, is it correct to say that when you're saying be prepared for a lap application next cycle, it would be to apply for the construction of Project A?
Right.
Yeah, just clarifying that for everyone.
Project B, Project B is.
Project B, we will not likely ever submit much of through lap, as Hetz said, and I'm just making sure everybody's.
75% of the cost would have to come from the family, 30 and 35 million dollars, and since that's a better part of one of our annual budgets, that'd be a challenge.
Understandable.
So what's the good news?
Start working on design for Project A, and look at Project B.
Sounds like it.
So we got a 35, what's, is the total cost doing the winding of all of Jones Sausage Road and crossing the railroad over, under, or by reverse osmosis, and getting to Highway 70 as a 35 million dollar project?
Somewhere between 30 to 35, and that's a rough estimate based on what the Town of Cary project was. Without some level of design completed on it, we can't have construction or constructibility costs to that level of estimate.
Jones Sausage Project A wasn't estimated, any estimated cost on that yet?
We have a design cost on that, but not a construction cost for that yet either.
But the 30, the 35, do Project A and B, the most significant point is the part to go under the railroad. That's gonna be the biggest chunk of that 35 million dollars.
Yeah.
Maybe half of it.
Well, if you were to, if you were to look at the spot process in the last cycle, the grade separation project that was submitted was submitted at 17.7 million. So that's what they.
So half of it's just that?
Yeah.
Yeah, and out of that total, project going from the south end of the Amazon project to Highway 70, that section under the railroad, yeah, it'd be.
Mr. Kenny, I think one way to answer your what's the good news question is that there, if council chose to use it, there is bond funding available that would allow you to begin the design portion, the 1.3 million, which would allow us to at least set that intersection at 70. And I think we all understand there's somewhat of a sense of urgency to try to set that. And one of our concerns was, would we even be able to do that through some preliminary design? So I think the good news from staff's perspective is, while that 1.3 million is a considerable amount of money, if council chose to make that a priority project in the unallocated bond funds, we could get a significant design done for completing the Jones Sausage Road down to Garner Road and be able to set the intersection for 70.
And in order to get, to talk seriously about this, and talk seriously about actually implementing the project, we're talking about having a bond referendum and putting it before the people. Because we can't, we're not gonna borrow the money any other way without getting public approval on this.
I believe after talking with Campbell, that staff and Campbell don't believe that we would be building, we would ever build this grade separation on our own. This is a significant enough project with cost-wise and regional impacts, that we believe that there are likely partners between North Carolina Rail, between North Carolina Railroad. There's gonna be implications with this crossing for the commuter rail project to ever be able to proceed forward. So what I encourage council to not think of is, how would we ever pay for a 35 million dollar project? It's just let's be as strategic now with dollars we already have, and Campbell's already given us some sort of guidance, and they've got the wheels turning now of how creative can we collectively, us and Campbell's staff, be at getting all the partners to the table, and considering how to best prepare ourselves for spot six, which is the statewide process that Hetz was mentioning.
And typically, it takes two spot cycles for a project to get into spot, and normally it's about five to seven year, once you've gotten in there, to actually getting the project completed. So this was one of the first years that this project was in spot, so next year would be its second year, and it's a good chance that it does actually get scored as well and is included in the.
And one of the best ways to show somebody that we're serious is to have all of the design worked out, all of the issues debated, and at least have. The worst thing to do is don't make a mistake, we can't afford to make a mistake on a 35 million dollar project. That is an estimating mistake.
But to be serious about it, they're not gonna consider doing Part B until we do Part A.
Yeah.
I mean, there's no need to do Part B unless you're gonna do Part A, so we're, I mean, we may spend dollars to do Part A, but it's not gonna be, that's what you get the lap funding for. You spend a few million, you may spend some million dollars, but that's what you get the lap funding for, to get direct to and through that intersection. I reckon if you can set the, if you can set the connect intersection, US 70, that any improvements done on Project A would include intersection improvements. Because we all know that. Because we all know that stands an improvement.
Right.
So this, this is getting serious about part A, because if we're serious about part A, in part B, we'll look at other partners, because then we'll know they were serious about part B.
And by going through the pre-application process, while we're not going to follow through with an application this year, what it's done, it has put this project more highly on the radar of the Campo staff. And so I think they're helping us come up with some strategies of, rather than submitting every grade separation rail project that they had in their region, which is what they did in spot five, they're now looking at this one going, oh, okay, next time, this one's going to be, we're going to submit fewer rail projects because there's a rail pot of money, and we're going to submit fewer, and we now know that this is a priority. So there's already benefits from having done a pre-application, even if we're not going to follow through and put in the final application this year.
Tell me, what spot stands for again?
Statewide prioritization of transportation projects.
Statewide participation of.
Prioritization.
Prioritization, okay. Just want to make sure I knew what spot is. Somebody asked me, I can halfway act like I know the call.
How about lap?
Lap is locally administered something project.
Locally administered projects.
That's what you found on my dog. Just for my own edification, this probably doesn't need to be said, but I wanted just reconfirm since we're talking about Amazon and Joan Sausage Road out there. The project to, 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 to create a four-lane road there from there, what, back to the rampant 40, that, that's, that didn't have anything to do with this, the, those dollars already, we've already agreed, state DOT is furnishing something like 4.5 million on that, and the town's anting up about a half million dollars for that, is that right?
600.
Yeah, okay.
And the state's is up to 4, 4.5.
Yeah, up to that, yeah.
Because they, they will only pay out qualifying expenses.
Okay. Just kind of wanted to reconfirm that, I guess.
Sounds good on that. And we'll discuss it more at the retreat.
All right, thank you.
Okay, who's up next?
It's still me. The last, the last project we have to discuss is the Ackerman Road Extension. Yeah, we did this in lap pre-submital, just to get the conversation going. And at the pre-submital meeting, we were made aware that this project actually would not be lap-eligible as it stands because of NCDOT functional classification. So the way lap-eligible projects for new alignment, as well as roadway extensions work, they have to have a functional classification of a major collector or minor arterial on the NCDOT functional classification system. And Ackerman Road has a local roadway classification. So staff has done a preliminary review of what the NCDOT functional classification system roadways are within town. There's a list, here's a list of major collectors and minor arterials that are included within the functional classification system that would be eligible for some lap funds for widening or new alignment or new extensions. And it includes a lot of the major roads within town. But if you look at the local roads that are not classified as major collectors or minor arterials, there's quite a few of those as well, including New Bethel Church Road, Hebron Church Road, Ackerman Guy Road, Buffalo Road from Avridge Road to NC 50 and Ran Road. So staff is basically seeking council's agreement to undertake an analysis of the functional classification system of NCDOT and make some recommendations for roadways that serve a higher function, functional purpose within Garner, and downgrades certain roadways that function more as local roads, and maybe do an analysis of linear feet of roadways that we can, we might want to upgrade to a major collector or minor arterial and downgrade some that are in that position right now to a local road and do an even match. And that's something that, at the pre-submital meeting, we were told that we would have to present the case for two NCDOT, as well as the capillary MPO, and they would then consider that for future, making changes to their functional classification. And once we are either successful in getting it on the functional classification, then that project might be something that we can submit to lap.
Thumbs up, I agree. I like that for the next step in the process.
So this is, put it off digital analysis, we're not submitting on Ackerman now.
We can't submit on Ackerman Road, as it stands. Get it reclassified, some of these, decl, some classified up, some classified down.
Thank you.
And I, I believe since that is just, that one is just guidance for us to pursue that, there's no more formal action needed. Het, is that, you don't need anything more formal than, of guidance to pursue and come back with more information?
Right, we'd come back with some more analysis of roadways that we think should be at a higher functional classification than they currently are in certain roadways that we might consider downgrading, and then we would want council's approval on that. And then we would write a memo to the DOT, as well as the capillary MPO, and submit that to see if it gets approved.
Is that something staff would do, or do you, would you use the on-call group, or do you, do you think staff can, can make those decisions already moving forward? I'm just asking, I don't say you have to use on-call, if y'all can do it, that's fine.
I, I think that's something we could undertake ourselves and take a look at.
Okay, great. Because you know the traffic counts, that's what you're looking at.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you.
I think we have committee reports.
We postponed the Greenway to hear these others. What do we want to do with a Greenway? Or do we want to do anything? We just leave it on, leave it unaddressed?
For now. Everybody came out? Well, if we, I need to understand, I mean, if we, if we leave it unaddressed, the lapse is gone for this year, right?
Correct.
I mean, we, yeah.
Yeah.
So we delay it at least for a year.
Well, we, we would no longer have that funding option for at least a year, which might very well mean that the whole project gets delayed, but technically, it just, I mean, we would, unless you all direct us otherwise, we would still proceed with the community meeting, the rescheduled meeting, and finish the work that we're in the middle of with McAdams, bring that back to you all, and then you could decide what to do at that point, but it, the, the lap process would have to wait for a year.
I mean, I, I would favor going ahead with the community meeting and getting that feedback. Maybe that's something we were going to do anyway, right?
Hmm?
Needed to do.
And once we decide on a project, then we, we can go ahead and commit on the, we can decide whether we're going ahead and design it or not. And we would be applying for construction only, because we, we got to do the design and acquire the right-of-way. So wouldn't we be?
I think, I think we would.
I'm not sure it's going to speed the process up by delaying, by delaying the, the application.
Some of the work we would have been able to complete along the way. So I mean, I don't, I guess we would have to do an analysis of exactly how, the net impact of the total project completion date might not be exactly a year, it might be something less than a year. But, yeah, I mean, it would, if we are, if the project hinges on getting lap funding, there would likely be somewhat of a, of a delay waiting for that process.
Okay.
But it, it could, it could be something less than exactly 12 months because of those reasons you mentioned.
Okay, Ron.
Yeah.
Oh, management reports. Standard reports in there, Garner info, finance report, and building permit, building and permit report. So if you have any questions, let us know. Want to give you an update on where we stand with the Town Hall Underground Power. John's going to cover that. We've got some more refined numbers from Duke Energy, and we wanted to go through those numbers.
So we finally gotten the contract from Duke Energy that we've been waiting on. We had received a cost estimate from them to do this work originally at, at a little over $300,000. Their final design cost came back at $442,000. That's in addition to the $10,000 that we paid to have the design done. So it's quite a bit of an increase, but we know it's a priority that council wants us to have done. The, the challenge we've got before the managers authorize to sign the contract, though, is that we previously brought to you a couple of funding sources to use for underground power when we didn't know what all the numbers were going to be. There was 111, 112,000 balance in the 70 White Oak project that council has previously approved us moving towards underground power at Town Hall. We haven't done the budget amendment that physically moves that, so you'll see that once we have all the numbers, but you've, you've given us that indication in the past. We also reported to you in the past that of the $400,000 in the bonds for underground power that was originally intended for the rec center area, there's going to be about $150,000 of that not needed in the rec center area. So that would be another $150,000 that we've previously talked to you about bringing over to this, to total about $260,000. So we've still got about a $340,000 delta that we've got to solve to pay for the underground power. And so this was, when the underground power was added to the project, there was no, it was, it was not originally part of the scope, and so there was no budget attached to that. We have not finalized closing out the, the Public Safety and Services Bonds, the police station in the Town Hall, but we do, we do believe there'll be some dollars left in that, but we also believe that they're probably going to be needed for a couple of, of issues that we've got with police station, like the steps that have had some settling, the roof that we knew we were going to have to re-code that might help with part of the leak issue, some gutters and so forth. So we don't really feel like there's probably enough in, that's going to be left in the bonds to help cover the underground power at this time. So we, we've got the, the question just before we can approve the, the contract of where the funding source is going to come for that $341,000. And so in addition to the 341, you may recall that when we, we previously have had the paving cost for Town Hall had come in higher than expected, and council had authorized us to move some funds over from underutilized budgets for that, but there still is about $109,000 in paving costs that council approved us moving forward with, that we've never identified a funding source for that. So if, if you add those two together, which we don't have to add them together tonight, but we do need to solve for at least the 341,000 for the underground power, so that we can sign the, the contract for that work to begin.
You, you said the total cost is 460 something, right?
440.
440. 442, we already had spent 10, and we'd already spent 150 with AT&amp;T. So of some of the original funding sources that we had already brought over, those have already been expended.
We got to come up with 442, and you said we had 112 from something?
Yes.
And what was the other, other?
And 150, that was for underground power in another place that we can move here. So that's about 260.
262, so we got to come up with 108.
100.
442, 260 is 180, isn't it?
Well, 442 plus 10 plus 150.
Plus 150.
Yeah, and so we, we've got a total of 603.
603.
But we had already solved for 261.
No, 603, we need to hear 603, we earned 442.
Sorry, I just want to give you the subtotal on that.
That's a big difference. I wonder where your math is going to go there. All right. So 341 off, and I stepped with 109, so you're down to 232. Excuse me, yeah, 232, right?
No, we're 341 off. There's, in addition to that, there's 109 of roadway that you've authorized us doing the work, but we've not identified a funding source for. So rather than subtracting those, you'd have to add them together for what you're totally, totally in for.
So, so it's not 603, it's 713?
Well, i- if you combine underground power and roadwork, we don't have to solve the roadwork issue tonight. The main thing we've got, it's got to be solved, but if you add them together, it is that, yes.
But the 603, I thought, included Duke plus what we've already committed to AT and, AT&amp;T. And I was thinking, that's where we arrived at 603.
Yes.
Okay. Now, we've committed to, to, we've committed to some additional paving, which is estimated at 110,000, 109,000, for which we don't have, have identified a source.
Correct.
So we've got to identify a source for 603 and 109, 772.
No, sir. Of the 603, you've already identified 262,000 for that.
We already identified the 150 that we paid AT&amp;T, correct?
111, 112 more of it.
So we, we have a shortage on underground power of 341, and we have a shortage on paving of 109.
So 450,000 we've got to find money for?
Yes, sir.
451, 177.
And so we, we've been waiting for them for two years to give us a contract, and I'm sure we got to have it signed, but in the next seven days. I'm being cynical, but I, I, I'm fed up with numbers tonight.
You're coping well, Buck.
Huh?
You're coping well.
Really?
We, we can sign whenever council wants to. We just know that the work won't proceed until we sign it.
Does staff have any recommendations, or they want some options from us?
Well, I would say, if we want it done, I doubt it's going to get any cheaper.
The longer we wait.
I agree. Well, we, we talked about the Greenway, there was street and sidewalk bonds for 1.8, 1.8 million dollars. How about roads, that street, 109,000?
That's a small take as compared to that.
We don't have any designated fund to get it out of, so we will be looking at, you know, potentially fund balance or?
I think fund balance or street and sidewalk bonds are the two options that we have available to us. If you, if you just leave the 1.8 alone for the, the Buffalo Road for now, there is still enough unallocated bond funds to absorb the sidewalks for, for US 401 that council has asked us to add. If you wanted to commit to the 1, the 401 super street project, council asks us to add sidewalks to both sides of that project. DOT's matching significant part of it. We've gotten a quote back for that. It's not much money, it's $100,000. We'll show you that in more detail.
All right.
If you, if you committed that, and if you wanted to commit the 1.3 for design that Het mentioned to you earlier, there's still 1.1 million or so of unallocated street and sidewalk bonds available. And that's making an assumption that the delta that was added in for the downtown parking with the recommendation that we got previously, we, we, we added some of that money back into your available pot. So there's about 1.1 million.
But, but we ain't got bids in for the spring drive sidewalk or the Vandoor Spring sidewalk yet, and those bids might be higher, so you don't want to.
Correct.
So we need, we need to have some money there in case those, those projects, kind of the way things been going on bids lately.
I don't see any reason to wait, I mean.
Well, I don't see any reason to wait, I'm just saying that we don't want to take every source of front money you got, because we've got other projects that we're designing right now. We need to make sure we have extra money, because everything else is coming above bid. So it ain't coming in any cheaper.
How long is their, how long is their proposal good for?
I think it is good for 90 days from August. The proposal's dated August 23rd, although I just received it, so I don't know if we can push back on that. I think, so I think it's good for 90 days. Yes, 90 days.
August, September, October, November. When are we holding a planning retreat?
November 7th.
7th and 8th.
All right. At the planning retreat, we've got a lot of projects out there that are in various stages of progress. And, and we're, and, and on each one of them, we've looked at different ways to fund it. Part of the planning retreat, I think, is going, a good portion of this early one is going to be addressing CIP. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Could we get all of these different projects labeled, putting numbers beside them, so that we can see all of the things that we're still, we, our pockets are going to have holes in them for reaching in and reaching in, and, and we don't know when we're going, we don't know when we're going to hit the bottom. But, but it's, this is something I, this is not just because of this, this, this issue coming up. But it's, this is something I, this is not just because of this, this issue coming up, and I'm for putting it underground, and I don't have a problem if we have to, if we have to go to fund balance. I don't think I do. But I'd like, I'd like to get all of the projects that we got out there that we've been talking about on the table, so that we're not kidding ourselves, and in six months or a year from now, we're saying, well, I thought we could have done this one because of the money that's left, just identified the possible sources, including the multiple times that we're talking about taking money out of, out of street bond funds. Right now, it's, there's so many numbers tonight, and they're verbal, it would really help us make better decisions when we see them on paper.
So we had, we had given a bond update in the August work session, so what we had thought about doing was taking that same presentation, there's a few numbers that have come in since then, and add it to that, and have that available to talk through with you.
Wish I could say I could remember what you did.
Okay. These two numbers were, not in those, we didn't have those, but the others, for the most part, were, but we'll have a true-up of all those bond projects for you.
You threw? Rodney, there. Are you?
Right now, hold off on signing the agreement, and then we'll?
That's one person's opinion.
Because will November, would that put us outside the time limit from August?
Let's find out.
It's November twenty-third, I don't know.
Yeah, I think it should be.
It's going to be by August.
We'll call them in advance, tell them we'll make, we'll make, we'll make decisions if that's a problem.
We'll just check with Ms. Worthen, just to make sure that I was saying correctly, that we were at the point we needed to approve the source before we could move forward. At some points with some of our bond projects, we have enough approved dollars that we can move forward. I just want to make sure that I was correct in saying we can't with this one.
In regards to bond projects, you mentioned that the issue is some things that have to be addressed at the police station, you'd think there's enough money left there to address those. Again, make sure, we've got to do some things that need to be done, and I'll make sure that we have the money there to do them.
Have to prioritize. Yeah, whatever's left in that particular bond is the only one that would cover those type uses of bond dollars, so you can't take street and sidewalks to fix anything there. So whatever's left, we don't know yet if it would. Some of the things that, that we know need to be done, we need to, we need to get estimates to do, and some of the things that we've had estimates for some time on, we'd have to refresh. So until we can close out the two building projects, we're not going to know exactly what's left.
Another roofing issue and the gutter issue's been talked about since we were there meeting, and that's a year and a half ago.
Yeah, and?
So we need to be addressed.
Rodney, anything else?
Yes, I want council to get an update on Creech Road. Jonathan, Mr. Hamm met with some DOT officials to talk about the lane issues that we've discussed and the turning radiuses and all of that, and just to fill you in on what he learned from that meeting and discussion on site.
Good evening.
Evening.
If you'll bear with me for a second, I'm going to pull up the?
Like I say, coming up Creech Road today, between, I was trying to get back between five-thirty or scored to six, and did last week one day also, a lot of traffic turning that left, that left turn movement.
Left turn?
A lot of left turn movement, and some of them stop at the stop bar, and some of them don't.
You're talking about from Creech Road?
Creech to turn left east on Garner Road. Again, some of them go all the way to the intersection, which is the problem, I agree it's the problem, and some do halfway stop at the stop bar. Some saddle it, it's just mixed.
Sure. So as Rodney mentioned, staff met with DOT, the Signals Department, on, on October the ninth to discuss this intersection and our concerns. As a part of the, the process, DOT has done, I think, a great job of trying to research this intersection, to try and find creative ways to, to help with issues that we, that we've brought to their attention. One of the, one of the issues that, that council had brought to us first, the first time that we contacted them, was regarding the left turn from Garner Road onto Creech, and the location of the stop bar for traffic turning right off of Creech onto Garner Road, crossing over the yellow line. When we met with them, they showed us the signal plans that showed that that stop bar should actually be about twenty to twenty-five feet further back from the intersection than it is today, and they attribute that to when the road was resurfaced this last time, that the stop bar was just put in the wrong location. And so what you will see, and I don't have a schedule on it, is that DOT is going to be going out there grinding up the existing stop bar and moving it back approximately twenty-five feet to bring it back to the way that the signal was originally designed. More than likely, they'd never replaced the signal loops in that intersection, so the signal loops are approximately twenty feet back as well, so that should help with some of the light timing as well. We also mentioned to them the additional concern about traffic turning right off of Garner Road onto Creech Road. Their, their options there were that they, they're going to, while they have the striping crew out, they're going to have a edge of lane mark, which will basically be a mini skip, put all the way across that intersection to help identify it. The other option that they asked us about was, and I'm going to zoom in a little bit more, so just bear with me. As you can see, we've got sidewalk here. They wanted to know if the town would like to have that sidewalk, that crosswalk marked with a high-vis ladder-type crossing, and with our anticipated projects, we felt, staff felt that was a good idea to go ahead and make that request to them. It's a zero-dollar cost to the town to have them do it. And so as a part of that, they'll be striping straight across, as you can see here, they want to maintain these two, the, the distance between these two stop bars. So what you'll see is, when they go out there and grind this up, they're going to actually move the stop bars back on Creech Road. It may be about ten feet, but their thought is that with the added visibility of these crosswalks, the, the edge of lane markings, and the new stop bars, that this should help raise, you know, raise awareness of what's going to happen, or as drivers approach the intersection, to help them hopefully stop in time, to stay behind those bars. The other, the other reason why I say that they've done a really good job researching this intersection, they went into the crash data, and they've looked at the, the ten crashes that they were able to find, five of those ten were rear-end accidents or caused by someone running the light going west on Garner Road. And most of them happened in the afternoon period, which is also when the sun is starting to set behind the, the stoplights going west on Garner Road. So what they're looking into, and they couldn't give me a definite on it, but what they're looking into is the idea of adding a back plate or a sun shade behind those two signal heads to help visibility as you're going west on Garner Road. So as far as what they can do with the intersection as it's currently designed, as it's currently built, it looks like they're, they're bringing forward the right ideas to hopefully address both of the issues that, that we've brought to their attention. We asked them, obviously, about increasing the radius, the turn radius, basically backing up this curb on both sides to try and make the turns wider. That to them is something beyond their scope, so if it was something that the town would want to do, it would be something that we would have to bring to them in a plan, and we would have to acquire the right-of-way and obviously pay for any of the construction costs. So that was the, the outcome of that meeting, just, and hopefully it gives you a good update of, of where we're headed. Once I have a schedule, or once I know that they're going to, that they're going to do this work, then I can obviously send that back through the manager's office.
All of the analysis that was done is excellent. All of the recommendations about striping and relocating and all of that is fine, and I think, and it's, it's a minimal cost. And I, I, fine, let's try. The answer to it is change radius.
Right, exactly.
And it isn't just, and, but give us a chance, but no, we're going to be coming back in less than five years, and if we're going to address it, we're going to have to change radius.
Well, and also, and this was not speaking ill of the magnolia tree at the corner at the bank's house, but, you know, when you back, when you back the stop bar up, that's what the people who want to turn right, that's where the whole issue comes, when people are getting up there, to turn right, right or red, because it is hard to see around that, even though it's trimmed, because that magnolia tree is right on the corner. And I mean, it's just a fact of life. It's been there for a long time, and, you know, saying it's got to cut the tree down, but if you ever increase the radius, that's when you catch that. But what you suggested, and they looked at, sounds all reasonable, putting, I agree, put the crosswalk up there, makes people more aware, because it scares them out in right in front of them, like they're supposed to be. Something, some, most drivers are, I rephrase that, some drivers don't give a flip, but anyway. And put in the shade deflector or sun deflector, or whatever you want to call it, sun, whatever it is, behind the lights will help. That's, that is an issue there, it's also an additional, Garner and fifty sometime, but this, it is more pronounced there. You're right. All reasonable, as Buck said, no cost solutions to try. Ms. Berger?
You know, I, I agree, we have to go with that and see what happens. I also am convinced that the radius is the problem, the main problem, but we'll have to go through this process first. I'm glad to see that, that they're going to put the crosswalks there. I know sometimes when I'm walking in the morning there, people that are making their right turn, don't even slow down. And pedestrians, they may have the, the green light, but pedestrians have the right-of-way, you start walking across, they don't even slow down, you might as well not be there. So the, the crosswalk may help that, but ultimately, it's going to take more than this, but it's a start.
Okay, Mr. Attorney. Mr. Attorney, you got?
I think I heard, we move along with the things DOT proposed and hold off on the radius for now.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Jonathan. Only other two things I have, as a reminder, staff is going to be going through ICS training, incident command, talking about disaster preparedness and roles and responsibilities. That's going to be taught by Bud Davenport from the Garner Fire Rescue on October twenty-third and twenty-fourth, and council's welcome to join either one of those classes, just let us know. Something that we go through from time to time to keep us up to speed. And then just a reminder that this weekend, on Sunday, from noon to five, there's going to be a Tricker Eat, the food truck rodeo in the downtown, so. And you have, you have that flyer in front of you. And I believe that's all I have.
Mr. Attorney.
Understood.
Start with Buck.
Yes, the Public Works Committee went, met out on site at Rand Mill, corner of Rand Mill and Main Street. We looked at the proposal that had been brought to us before about improving the parking lot behind the buildings that face Main Street at the southwest corner of Rand Mill and Main, and our conclusion was that we would recommend to council that we not proceed with all of the, that, that parking lot improvements right now, but that's an item that goes on the CIP list, another one of those, it's, we got to find the money for it. But to, to take the project, to reverse the grade that, that the, the design firm had recommended, we see how that can work out on site, and to terminate the project at the curb turnouts into the, into the parking lot at the rear. Somebody's installed a, a new power pole that's big, nice, the best one out there, it's going to have to be moved, but that's, so plan's adjusted, but terminate the project at the, take the curb down Rand Mill and turn it out into the parking lot to find that, that driveway entrance, and terminate our project there for the present. Is that the gist of it, Greg?
And, boy, and the apron into the parking lot, and also the dumpster path, the spot box, so they wouldn't have the individual roll-out containers there, we have the dumpster, which I think they would like to have, so it would make it a much more, it would be much neater back there to have just one dumpster versus eight, ten, twelve roll-out containers.
Next item, although there's, I'm sure there's always ongoing discussions about insurance, can we reserve medical insurance? Can we reserve a short spot on the agenda at the planning retreat to address insurance? Unless it's going to be, unless there will be discussions on that in some other fashion?
Well, we'll have some discussions about that prior to the retreat, but we certainly can reserve some time if we need to follow up on some things.
At least put everything together, maybe we'll know what we're doing with them.
Yeah, give you some ideas of what we, what our plans are for looking at various options.
And in the, I don't know who sends out the Wake County Community Report, but it lists the county and the towns, and about the, the big elements, the high-profile elements, or the things that they want to report to us. And one of the items that jumped off the page when I read that report was from, Wake County Commissioners are considering going to the legislature and recommending to the legislature that authorization be given to the Wake County Board of Education to assess taxes, giving them the authority to assess taxes. And I think that's occasion where we need to make a decision as to whether we weigh in on it and send our, our opinion to Wake County Commissioners, and more importantly, after that, is what is the recommendation. And I, it's, it's late, I don't necessarily, unless somebody wants to discuss it, offer an opinion, but that's something that I think we need to weigh in on, I'll just take it that far.
Absolutely, absolutely.
That's all I got.
Yes, since we talked about crosswalks, do we have the status of the crosswalk at Buffalo and Abusborough, and the timber drive and the Greenway?
Yes, we have engaged the contractor on that and waiting on it.
Okay, so it will be done by the end of the year. Well, okay, so I'll make sure, that's all we have for now.
Thank you.
Give me another date on the brand opening for our recreation sale.
Groundhog Day.
The latest date we had was November, mid-November?
There's construction meeting tomorrow, so after tomorrow's construction meeting, we'll, we'll get an update for you.
Mrs. Johnson, after our public works meeting downtown, Mr. Kenny and I walked through there, and I can assure you, will not be, as staff agrees, it will not be the middle of November. I think we'll see what the race is on, if we can have over, over and under, over and under, when the rec center opens, and when the Amazon Center opens, how, how much further behind Amazon, Amazon will be the rec center, over and under, a hundred and eighty days.
Jackie, we might be able to go in there and watch the Daytona Five Hundred on it next year.
Next year.
Might be able to watch an Amazon next year, too, the way they're moving, that's another story.
Well, Amazon look like they're going to beat them, beat them to the punch anyway. They, they are really working hard there. That's all.
Just one question, I brought up the, the rough patching, the portion of Mechanical Boulevard between seventy and 401, is it still rough? Do we, have we heard, had any feedback, or has anybody tried to contact?
We talked it into DOT, and our speculation is that it's a utility project, and?
Can we call them back and ask them when they're going to tell us something?
Do you know?
I've got a brief, brief update on that. Where we are is, I reached out to DOT, DOT said that road was not their road, so then I made a phone call over to the City of Raleigh, and kind of was trying to check in to see if it was considered their road, because when you did look at addresses on there, it shows up as South Wilmington Street. I have not heard back, yes, I equally kind of had that surprise look myself. So I've not heard back from the City of Raleigh, they said that's kind of not uncommon with these types of roads, because the DOT looks at them as a service road, and so oftentimes they do say it's not theirs, but they were checking with their development services team, that is the City of Raleigh, and I've not heard back from my contact with the City of Raleigh yet, and that was a few days ago. So we do believe the work is a result of utility work, but really, some, we need to determine the ownership of the road, so they have, the owner of the road has to make that request back to the utility if you're going to have any meeting, and if we go back, I can't force the utility group to do something. can't force the utility group to do something if the road's not ours. They're not really going to listen, they'll only listen to the owner.
It's amazing how, wasn't it, just a few years ago, they did, somebody resurfaced that portion and we didn't do it.
Well, and the one encouraging piece I did hear was that there have been, there have been instances before where these roads have been accepted by the City of Raleigh in some of these instances, so not committing them to it, but again, we're really just still trying to determine that ownership, and then once we determine that, go back to the appropriate utility group and ask them to fix the street. Since it's a little bit time-consuming, we're working on it, we have not forgotten it.
It's kind of like the broken door at the post office, they've been waiting four months to get authorization to fix it. Come on. Thank you, Boris. They told me.
Ken.
Thank you, sir. On a slightly different note, since Amazons have been mentioned, I don't know how many of you get the Southern City North Carolina League magazine, there's an excellent article in there about Amazon choosing Garner for a new facility, so I commend that to you for your reading, if you haven't seen it. Lest my fellow council members think that I was strictly absent on vacation about a week ago, whenever we had our other meeting, I did bring back with me from that meeting a budget from the City of Charlottetown, Prince Edward Island Province in Canada, and I'll share that with any of you, they started a previous time saying, we're sorry, we started the year, $15 million in deficit, but they've made it up in the meantime. The mayor would appreciate this, they gave me a nice little tour of the building, they gave me one of their nice little coat of arms, I've got an extra one there. I think, I think they said they refer to their mayor up there as his lordship. I said, we don't call our mayor that, we call him other names, but anyway. I do like to stop in at other city governments when I, I stopped in one in Swegney, and they pretty much are French-speaking provinces up there, so we never could connect speech-wise to, for the lady to understand what it was I was looking for, I think, so. At any rate, that's, it's always nice to visit other areas and to talk with people and meet and see what's going on in their towns. Back at home, nobody has to tell me tonight, I don't know if anybody knows, are there regulations in our Lake Benson Park that speak to the issue of flying objects, or flying small planes or whatever? I'm out there on occasions, and while I've never been struck by one, I do, from time to time, see folks flying.
We do have an aircraft policy.
I thought it was some policy, but I wasn't sure exactly what it was, so... Maybe after the meeting, somebody can let me know. I mean, I don't see it happen on a regular basis, but I do see it from time to time, and I just kind of wanted to understand.
Yeah, we have a, we have a policy, and there are FAA rules that also govern it, that of course would trump any policy that we have, but...
We got an answer to it, Rick? On drones?
Yeah, well, yeah, drones adding on to that, yes, we do have an ordinance. No one is supposed to be launching or retrieving a drone on our property without our explicit permission. So if you do see someone doing that, you can, I suppose you could pick up the phone and call police, I don't know, I mean, it isn't forcible, and they're not supposed to be out there doing it. Basically, we're the ones who are supposed to be doing it.
There are other hobbyists type of vehicles, whatever you want to call it, besides drones, so we have to look at...
Yeah, it could be like a model aircraft.
Flying helicopter plane.
And it covers those as well, but unless you have our permission, explicit, the way I think the way it's written, unless you have our explicit consent from the manager or his designee, you are not supposed to be launching or retrieving an unmanned aerial vehicle on our property.
That's a good way to say, because this one, I'm pretty sure was not a drone, it looked like a little small jet aircraft that could do all kinds of...
Yeah.
So, okay, let me see here, I've got one other thing. Could engineering or somebody maybe just let me know the prioritization on street repaving? I've had some citizens out on Brucemont wanting to know when, what priority their street is on, I'd be happy to get with you, Jonathan, or somebody, to, just to be able to answer that question. You don't have to worry about answering it now, if you don't want to.
I don't have the current pavement condition assessment with me, but I do know that we're working on the new pavement condition assessment, and I really would probably prefer to wait until that comes out to give an answer as to where it's going to fall on that list.
Okay, that's fine, that'll be coming out fairly soon, I guess.
It should be in the next 60 to 70 days, somewhere in there, before the end of the year, because that's when we want to get our next contract out.
Okay, that's good, that's good. All right, and only, the last thing I have, Mr. Mayor, is not related to town business, but hope to see many of you at our Rotary Oyster Fest on Thursday evening at the Agro Supply Place, so it's always a festive occasion, a nice fundraiser for the Rotary Club. With that, I will, that's it.
Look, guys, I'm already getting Christmas invitations, parties. I would like to ask y'all, when they do light up main, call me to the stage, those that are there, come to the stage with me. If I get more invitations, I can't quit you. Is that good? When they call me to the stage, light up main, Scott used to call me, I'm asking if you're there, and he calls me, come to the stage with me.
Oh, okay, sure.
You probably get some buzz there, bud.
That's good.
And anything else I want to tell y'all? If I... All right, motion to adjourn?
I've got one question.
All right.
They paved part of Garner Road, they going to pave the other part?
Definitely.
Well, we paved the last one, they didn't pave the whole stretch, they paved this portion of it, this has gone through and through the intersection at the railway at Vandoor.
It doesn't look like they are, but...
I'm pretty sure they've completed the resurfacing that they were doing on the road.
Okay, motion to adjourn.
Mr. Mayor.
All in favor?
All right.